Good morning, Foothills County. Welcome to our Wednesday, July 2, 2025 meeting. I'll call it to order at 9:00 a.m. We do have two proposed emergent items. A2 emergent item F6, 2025 capital budget expenditure cemetery bench pads. Who would like to speak to that? Welcome, Ms. Corten Shell Allen.
Good morning, Madam Reeve and Council. Thank you for considering this emergent item. The reason for the request is that it was intended, the bench pads were intended to be part of the 2025 local road program. However, we found a much more cost-effective way to to move ahead with these bench pads which do not include concrete.
All right, we'll look to council for any questions or perhaps a motion. Counselor Castell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. I'll give you a motion for the emergent item.
All right, thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Call the vote all in favor. Thank you. Motion carries. We will add it under F6. The second one is A3 emergent item F7, requests for easement, future road dedication. And Counselor Seaworth?
Yeah, I would just look to get this added as emergence. I'd give you that motion to add it. So this was, a version of it was on the agenda last week, but we kind of missed the mark, missed the point, and with summer break coming up, be nice to get it dealt with.
Sorry with the summer?
The summer break? Council, all for six weeks.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Further discussion? That's your motion, I assume, Counselor Seaworth?
Yeah, yeah, as emergent, thank you.
All right, I don't see any questions, so I'll ask for the vote all in favor. Thank you, motion carries. We'll add that one under F7. All right, with that, we'll get started on our roundtable this morning. Counselor Oll, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Reeve. Good morning, everyone. Just one thing. On next Sunday, so this is for Public Works and Ex Services. Next Sunday is the Pritus Community Association Stampede Breakfast, and we had requested and a motion was passed to support opening the gate and preparing the site if it needs to be mowed. I'm not sure what it needs for preparation, but there's a lot of parking. Last year, there was approximately 600 attendees, so just make sure that that's on the radar for this week. And and thanks to all the departments, there's a lot of work going on in Division Four, so thank you to everyone, and that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Foothills. I guess I'll just mention that 498 is worth a drive. Little bit of a shame that we've done all that great base work there and then got the MRO too thick and it's blowing out already. So that's all they had to add to the conversation this morning. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a few. Apparently, there is a leafy spurge outbreak. And perhaps we can have our our new weed inspector, Ms. McHugh, go out and take a look at it. There seems to be quite a big patch near the Rona in Black Diamond. I think there's a piece that the county is responsible for, so if it isn't on ours, then perhaps we can contact Diamond Valley regarding. There's another large patch near the Millerville Christ Church as well. And there was a recent subdivision that council provided that apparently is full of leafy spurge, so I'm wondering if we can add that as a condition when we do subdivision. I know we will have to talk about it in future, but when we are subdividing, if we can make that a condition, if if the subdivision is full of weeds, that they clean that up as part of the condition of subdivision. So perhaps we can, we can look at that as well. Let's see. I think I had one. Oh, there's the extension of 498 near Blockey. And Director Hemingway, maybe you can help me. Is it 434 or 498?
Or is it right to?
Yeah, yeah. Some of it turns into gravel, apparently. It's it's MROed, and then there's a piece that turns into gravel. I had a resident who lives in my area but has land there. And they're wondering, I guess, for Public Works, why that piece has not been MROed in there, if we can take a look at that? And maybe report back to council if you, if you're, if you have time to to have a look. 498, yeah, thanks. I thought that's what, okay, great. And that's all I had. Deputy Reeve Waldorf?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good morning, Foothills County. Hope everyone had a terrific Canada Day long weekend. The weather's been great and not too too much for Public Works this morning. I do want to thank them for their communication with the Artesia residents on the sinkhole that's developing on Whispering Springs Way. Very timely response to the to the residents. I know it's could be a bigger issue. Not sure if you have any update, but we'll certainly be looking forward to seeing what we find. I know engineers have been involved and Director Kruger shaking his head yes. So if you have a minute or some comments, would appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counsel, I need to go back. Before I go to you, Counselor McHugh, we need an approval of this morning's agenda, please. Thank you. Counselor Seaworth, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries.
And Madam Chair, Director Kruger is going to reply to my question.
All right, sorry. Go ahead, Director Kruger.
Thank you. And through the reef to Deputy Reeve Waldorf. That's correct. We've we've attempted a few fixes there in the past based on recommendations. We do have a site meeting out there with Tetra Tech in two weeks to identify some of those trouble areas.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McHugh?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through the chair to Director of Public Works. Just quickly on 498, I saw the tanker sitting there this morning, I didn't drive around them. But is the intent not to MRO the last two miles of that dust there?
I see, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to share on 498th Avenue, the resident did have a discussion with Manager Weber. And his response was that on 498th, we were using recycled asphalt and oil as an experiment on a section of that road, just to see how it holds up through the freeze thaw cycle. But between 176th and 224th, we would be putting down MG30, which is a dust control product. And depending on how the experiment goes, the rest of that road would be done in the coming years as well.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Alger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to everyone. Through the chair to Public Works, just carrying on with some road conditions. I know the patch and crews have been out in Division Five and and done a wonderful job. The two roads that we did a few years ago that we double chip sealed, so 64th Street by Soraco and 274 going up past the Winton Heights. The road's holding up very well, but there's a few potholes, and I don't know if our, as of yesterday, our crews hadn't hadn't filled those in, but when I say potholes, they're like, they're a foot deep in that, and you know, this big around them, they're just huge tire catchers. The it's just, there's just three or four in each of those roads that I wonder if we could have a look at. And the other thing I noticed the other day was spray painted lines on 64th Street north of 274, so heading towards Soraco. Every, I'm going to say 50, 75 feet, there was a little little line from the ditch out to the road. Is that designated for the reclamer operation, or? Do we know?
So hi, through the reef to Counselor Alger. Kelsey here just providing some updates to for Bruce while he's away.
Yep.
But both of these roads that you're discussing are on my update today. So they are prepping work to start on 64th Street West this week in between 226th Ave. and 274th Ave. West, so if that answers your question.
Okay, that explains the lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Seaworth.
Thank you, and good morning. A couple of things this morning, I guess. First off, two roads, Mrs. Allard, so thank you for all the work done in Blockey to clean up the sidewalks and the streets. It was much appreciated and noticed by residents, a number of comments. Just in that, so last, I believe it was last Tuesday or Wednesday, our crews were out there, graded the roads up, did dust control. Just a couple of small items to maybe improve that in the future. For the parade yesterday, it was a little, some of that dust control was a little bit mucky still, so it might be good if it was done, you know, a little bit earlier, maybe a couple of weeks earlier or so. Another thing, there was a couple of comments about the grading of the roads, so when the grader went in, nobody knew they were coming in, and so there's lots of vehicles still parked on the roads. And so the grader went around them and very obvious and cleared everybody. So if the residents knew that the grader would come, I think a lot of those vehicles would be removed and make it a little nicer, so. But just a couple of small notes, but thank you very much for the work done there. Appreciate it. The other thing, I'm glad to see Mr. Officer Bodett here. Appreciate it. Number of concerns, complaints coming out from traffic on the, you will call it Kaylee Race Track Road, so 658th Avenue, perhaps. It's the one on the north side of Kaylee that goes east out to that new racetrack out there. So events are happening out there multiple times a week right now, oftentimes on the weekends. So cars are coming off the number two, putting the hammer down for the three or four miles till they get to the racetrack. So a lot of concern about the speed of traffic on that road. Just wondering if we can get some extra patrol out there. I don't know if if weekends are an option, because that seems to be when a lot of the a lot of the concerns are, so. Yeah, I think there's been some calls into your department already, and yeah, if we get some some enforcement out there, it would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Castell.
Thank you, Madam Reeve, and good morning, Foothills. Just back to the wild caraway issue in Division Three and in Division Four, too. I went by both yesterday, or no, Sunday. And I've seen it spread now other places, so it's on the west side of coming out of Pritus going south, and it's right on Fish Creek there. It's been dealt with before, but it's all back. And then when I drove further up to the big bend, when you turn east, it's spread to the next property, so it's moving. And then the one I alerted you to now on Pritus Valley Road, south of Plumbers, it's on Pothole Creek on the west side now, and it is in the east side, near the end of of Pritus Valley Road. And there's probably two to three acres of it, and it's so thick, it's just crazy. And I know you can't get hold of the owner, so I'm wondering if we need to leave something on the gate? Because now that one, I noticed if you keep on going on 224th or Pritus Valley Road, it's on the right and it's going into the trees, so it's whistling down that road and and I don't know what we can do about it in a fast, fast track, because it's it's all in flower.
So yeah, just through the reef to council. So I checked some of those properties that you mentioned there, and I mean, I've talked to one of the landowners and then, you know, just waiting to your back for some of the other ones as well. So yeah, it's kind of something I'm going to be working on as well as these leafy spurge issues. So hopefully, next week, I'll be getting more into that or get some more contacts with these with these landowners. But yeah, for sure, it's on it's on my list there of things to look at, but maybe if I could get a detailed list that you just mentioned there. But I'll definitely drive that road again, for sure.
Yeah, because there's two new owners. One doesn't live, no, there's no home on the one on Pothole Creek. And then the other owner is diagonally crossed from the one that's, we're already investigating, because it's a new owner and
Yeah, I know that's been a bit of a challenge even to for some of these properties when I'm when I'm talking to them that the owner has changed or something has happened to them. And so then there's a new owner on title and or maybe not even on our tally yet, so yeah, this is challenging, yeah.
It is, it is, it's, but it's just going wild, so thank you. That's wild caraway.
Thank you. Let's continue on with our departments. I'll go to you, Manager Allard. Welcome for anything you may have.
Morning, Council, and thanks for having me today. I'm just giving an update while Bruce is away on holiday, so good to see everyone. So I just have a few updates from the supervisors in Public Works. Surfacing, we've chatted about a little bit already, but surfacing one crew is going to start mixing in MG30 as dust control on 498 Ave., east of 176th Street East. Not sure if that answers your question from earlier. Surfacing two crew is wrapping up on 210 Ave. West today and will be prepping to start work on 64th Street West this week. Surfacing three crew is currently mixing on 128th Street West, south of 22X. So that gives you a little update on what they're up to. Graveling, the regraveling and graveling program is underway and all district grading is on track as well. The newest grader operator has moved into her division in Millerville District, and that's going great with continuing training there. Construction crews are currently split up, some finishing final touches at the water reservoir, and others are working at an intersection of 256th Street and 210 Ave. West with a completion date of end of July, and I believe the road is being closed there for a month. And then just an update for Public Works Administration, we're working on some inventory streamlining currently. We have some bugs in our system that we're trying to work out. These issues are affecting location moves of stock, so we're just trying to work on on that as well. So that's the update I provide to you today.
Thank you. I don't see any questions, so we'll move to our newly minted Director Kruger. Please go ahead.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Reeve and Council. Only updates this morning from utilities. There was a water leak that was repaired yesterday in Blackey on Aberdeen Street, just north of Alberta Ave. I just want to thank Greg and John for the quick work there in getting it repaired. The Kaylee transfer valve replacement's happening overnight today. And the Blackey one number two pipeline replacement went well last week. Thank you. And sorry, Madam Reeve, I'll be available for item F7.
All right, thank you. On to you, Manager Cornealson.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. Good morning, Council. Good morning, Foothills County. And so this is my 36th update. And so today I got a call, and the guy said he was making his yearly call come talking about weeds. And I thought to myself, I remember this guy from last year. this guy from last year. And it reminded me, I've been here a whole year now. So this is my, today's my one-year anniversary, so I'm pretty happy about that. Still enjoying things. Having said that, I know I've been doing a lot of weed, doing a lot of weed calls this, especially the last two weeks. And so just working on those things, some of the ones that you mentioned already, and some new ones coming up. So hopefully we can get some of those solved. So currently, my guys, they're mowing grass in the eastern part of the county, and they're kind of moving down towards Blackie now. I've got another, the big Schulte mower is kind of by Kayleigh still, working in that area. I've got one sprayer doing roads, kind of in the southeast part of the county, still doing Kosha, and then one working up, will be working up just north of Oketoks on some thistle issues there. And that's all I've got for that. The chem shed, hopefully we'll get to Alberta Builders this week or next week to start the process there on the plans for that. And the trial is up for the second time and looking good. Yeah, still working on some ridged and ground squirrel letters. We're trying, we're gonna be discussing it tomorrow at our egg service board meeting. How best to deal with those, or to try to get Strick Nine back again, I guess, I suppose. And that's all I've got for today.
Thank you. Director Solney.
Good morning, Madame Reeve. Good morning, Counsel. Just wanted to touch on the fire risk status in the county. We're currently at an advisory, holding there. I still think we're good at that, holding there. We've got some possible rain coming up over the weekend, but after that, we've got some warmer temperatures in the forecast. We'll keep a close eye on things, and I think we'll do a reevaluation after the weekend, so it should be okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Officer Bodett.
Good morning, Madame Reeve and Counsel. I don't have much to update you in regards to Foothills County Enforcement. It's been a busy weekend. We did help out at the Millerville Racetrack event on July the first, had an officer out there at their request. And yeah, we attended the Blackie event also. Unfortunately, the officer got called away to a fire event, so we weren't able to participate in the parade. But hopefully in the future we can do that. It's been a busy summer so far. One of my guys on the weekend here, one of the officers, got somebody doing one hundred and seventy-five and a hundred. So we're trying our best to be, make things safe out there on the road. So that's all I have for Counsel. Thank you.
All right. And I see you have item F2, so let's deal with that while you're here. Traffic Safety Bylaw Amendment, June 25th, 2025, Bylaw 51/2025, third reading, page 210 of our agenda. Go ahead, Officer Bodett.
I don't have any amendments to the bylaw after the second reading here. So it's presented as is to Counsel.
All right, so we are looking at, says third reading, but in my agenda, second and third. So let's deal with second. Anyone willing to provide second reading on this bylaw for traffic safety? Counselor Seaworth, further discussion? All in favor? You? Motion carries? It only needs third. We'll change yours to third. Thank you, Counselor Seaworth. All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for that clarity. I think that's the only item you had on there, right, Officer Bodett? Thank you. Let's go to while you're up at the front, F7, requests for easement with future road dedication, southwest, southeast. Counselor McHugh?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wasn't in favor of the last motion and wanted to speak to it. And having some time to reflect, and it was the use as identified as Counselor Oll, the term premises. And I would appreciate if we could change that language and make it so that it is identified as traffic concerns premises, so that there is no confusion in reading that bylaw.
Is there a page that you're referring to, Counselor Seaworth or McHugh? With your
Just working on finding it.
Okay. And I'll go back to you, Counselor Seaworth. Would you be amenable to reconsider your motion? Let's find out what, exactly what you're asking for, Counselor McHugh, if you can. Counselor Seaworth, I'll go to you. Did you have something in the meantime, or do you want to?
No, just, I guess, to speak to that. I guess in order to have the conversation about this, we would need to reconsider. So I'm not sure whether the vote was complete and it was all done.
Yeah.
We need a motion to reconsider, and then we can have a discussion again.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't ask for opposed. I didn't see your hands. Go ahead, Counselor Oll.
Sure, the page that we're referring to is page seven of the bylaw and 221 of the agenda. So at the very end, under general, number eleven, general, is the item number four. And I had brought that forward in terms of curious as to why we would be dealing with the person's premises. Usually that refers to a home. And it states, "No provision of this bylaw or any action taken pursuant to any provision of this bylaw shall restrict, limit, prevent, or preclude the county from pursuing any other remedy in relation to a premises as provided by the Municipal Government Act or any other law of the province of Alberta." Thank you.
Okay, and I, I think we dealt with this at, at first reading and decided to move forward. But what would your amendment be then, again? You just want that whole paragraph removed? Counselor McHugh?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's as simple as just after the term premises, putting in brackets, "as related to traffic as provided by the Municipal Government Act."
Just make it In brackets, "as related to traffic." Anyone else? So we'll go back to you, Counsel, or Counselor Castell. Go ahead.
Yeah, I forgot to open this right up, and I had made two little, not three little notes. So on page 215, where it says, "Now therefore, the Council of Municipal District of Foothills," should we change that?
Where?
On page 215, number one, and then it says, "Now therefore, the Council of Municipal District of Foothills." And then when you go to the bottom of the page, under interpretation F, or which is now G, it says, "Council of Municipal District of Foothills."
I thought mine's changed in red to Foothills County.
Mine hasn't changed.
Madame Reeve, may I provide a comment?
Go ahead. And then on page 216.
Hang on, Counselor Oll. Go ahead, Counselor Castell.
Yeah, I wasn't done, sorry. Number three, Traffic Control One, Bylaw of Municipal District of Foothills. So shouldn't we change those?
Yep. Foothills County.
Now, the very last one on page 221, I don't know whether you leave repeal Municipal District of Foothills, because yeah, that was the one we're repealing. So that part's okay to leave in there. But the other three have, have to change.
Okay, so we have changes on that.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are textual. We don't need a motion, but we'll have staff note that. Counselor Oll.
Sure, it was about the first one that was brought up, and that we're, we're editing something from 2012, I believe. And, and that is all referring to the Municipal District of Foothills. So that's why it's concurrently, both titles are happening in this particular document. So just a check over as to whether it should be Foothills County or Municipal District in regards to, this is an edit to the old bylaw, and it's not, and it's just an edit. It's just a change. So we're, we're using both titles concurrently. So that's something that maybe just confirm that it may be correct to keep it as Foothills Municipal District of Foothills in regards to the, the items that were just brought forward. So I just wanted to provide that clarity that was in the discussion last week as well. Thank you.
Go to you, Manager Barrett. Did you want to comment on that? On that, those changes then? Or CAO pain?
I could just quickly, the bylaw from 2012, 35/2012, is not actually changing. The new bylaw is an amending bylaw that shows what has been amended to the other bylaw, if that makes sense. It's kind of convoluted. But the, the bylaw from 2012, while it's redlined in your agenda, it's only for demonstration purposes to show you what the new bylaw is going to say and what has been changed. So the bylaw from 2012 is not actually physically being amended. It's, it's just in there for demonstration purposes.
So we're only changing the redline portions, not the original bylaw?
Yeah, and that
We don't need to change.
Correct, and it being done by a brand-new bylaw.
Does that make sense to everyone? Yeah, we're not, this isn't a brand-new bylaw, so we don't need to change MD of Foothills to Foothills County. It's the same bylaw. Okay, and then Counselor Oll then, so if we make those changes in brackets, as Counselor McHugh suggested, "as related to traffic", Counselor Seaworth, are you okay with those changes?
Yeah, I think I am. I just wonder if Mr. Bodett has any comment on that as related to traffic. I think it makes sense in my mind, but I wouldn't mind hearing.
This provision that's, sorry, to Counsel, to Madame Reeve and Counsel, to Counselor Seaworth, in regards to the, to that provision in the bylaw that relates to premises, that is just an overlay that's stated in the bylaw to not limit, that this bylaw would not limit any other actions in regards to the MGA in any kind of enforcement or any kind of actions toward it. They put in premises in there, but it's related to the whole property. And under the definition of the premises, this, this bylaw, this traffic bylaw would not prelude or stop the county from doing any other actions under the MGA. And that's what this provision is in regards to it. There would be no traffic-related issues in regards to a premise. There would be no relation to, to both of those. So that's why that, that's why it's added to this bylaw, so.
So you're saying it's fine the way it is, or that's the way you would prefer it?
Yes, I would, Reeve and Counsel, I would rather, I would like to see that stay as is in regards to, it's just a, trying to figure out the words here. In regards, it's just a, an addition to the bylaw to, so that it does not interfere with any other actions from the county regarding the MGA and enforcement.
Thank you. CAO pain?
Thank you, Madame Reeve. Yeah, and I recall that being similar to Mr. Stapley's explanation last week when that question came up. And I think, I think the important part of it is, it's really intended to ensure that if there's a active file on a premises, and where the example came in last week from Mr. Stapley was somewhere similar to Heritage Point Commercial Center, where the traffic bylaw would apply to the parking area there, although it's not necessarily a public roadway. If you're undertaking enforcement on a premises or a property there, it couldn't be argued in court that this bylaw limits your ability to undertake that action. It's, it's a very important section of the bylaw, actually, from that perspective.
All right, back to you, Counselor Seaworth. Amend or not amend?
No, I think I would just leave it as is, I think. And I mean, the, the heading, the entire thing is about traffic, right? So that gives a lot of clarity there too. So thanks.
All right, so we have the motion then from Counselor Seaworth. Any further discussion on the motion, and then we'll revote on this. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right, I'm gonna get my right agenda here. Let's see, who else did we have here? Did you have anything, Director Solney? I don't see anything. All right. We'll have you come up, Coordinator Court and Shell Allen to deal with F6, your 2025 capital budget expenditure, cemetery bench pads.
Thank you, Madame Reeve and Counsel. So for the twenty, the year 2025, we were approved for the bench, the cemetery bench program, which included eleven benches for our county cemeteries. Part of that is that there is a bent, a pad required underneath the benches. Originally, we had intended to do concrete benches or pads, but have come up with another alternative that is considerably less than what was budgeted and what, what was provided in, in any quotes. And it includes using the granite from the Foothills Cemetery stockpile. Those pads are, are, those slabs are $325 apiece. We put compacted gravel underneath and put the granite on top and then the bench right on top of that. So it's considerably less than what had been budgeted and what had been quoted. Does, does Counsel have any question regarding that change from doing concrete, which is an inordinately expensive process with small batches and?
All right, thank you, Counselor Alger. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Ms. Court and Shell Allen. So the, we did have those slabs up for sale. Did we end up selling just a few? And I'm assuming that we have enough to complete this project.
Through the chair to Counselor Alger. Sadly, they have not sold yet. So we have plenty. I only need eleven.
So each, each, so one slab is one bench kind of thing? And we have the benches already, don't we?
We do, and they match up perfectly.
Yep. Okay, that works for me and happy to give the motion when needed, Madam Chair.
Sure, I'll take that motion. Any further discussion, Deputy Reeve Waldorf?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Manager Court and Shell Allen. In the granite option on the staff report, it talks about 3575 granite transportation plus excavation plus gravel plus installation. Do we have those numbers, or is it all included in the 3575?
No, we do not have those numbers. They would be under the contract that we have with our excavation and, and groundwork contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else with any questions? Counselor McHugh?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So then, knock on question to Deputy Reeve Waldorf's question. So what, so this motion will be for the granite option still up to 55,000? Or what are we doing for the, the plus, plus, pluses?
The entire project cannot exceed the 55,000. The, the lowest quote that we did get for the concrete, it would be less than that. So the benches would be, the bench pads would be less than $25,245.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for that. So I guess, should we cap this at thirty then?
Is that sufficient?
Well, so the original budget was fifty-five, the Well, so the original budget was fifty-five, the Mariah, Mariah projects is twenty-five, thirty-five seventy-five. Just using easy math here, if we call it thirty thousand, we'd have a maximum number that this can go to. Otherwise, we're not saving anything. We're just budgeting at the original fifty-five.
If I might, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
The entire project is fifty-five thousand dollars, which includes the benches. The benches were eleven thousand dollars. So to cap at thirty-five would, um, potentially give us a, put us in a little bit of a tight position. Uh, because we do need, um, the, uh, the assembly to be done and the installation. And the installation isn't very difficult. It is, um, it is boring into the granite slabs with, uh, with a diamond drill.
All right, thank you, um. We have a motion then from, uh, Counselor Alger. Any further discussion on the motion? I'll ask for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Um, let's keep you here. Uh, let's see, and deal with the F five Gladys Union Cemetery fencing. Uh, page two sixty-seven of our agenda, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your, in your staff report, um, there is an error. Uh, my apologies for that. Um, the, uh, the fencing will not be a hundred and forty-five meters. It will be ninety-five meters and will not extend southward past the, uh, the gates on two four zero street. So that is just a, just as a note, um, when we're looking at this. So currently, um, the fencing along five forty-seven and two fortieth Street East was, is a combination of a metal T-barb with wooden posts with wire barbed fence and is very poor condition. This, uh, this fence came along with the Gladys Union Cemetery when it was transferred to the county in twenty eighteen. It has been completely depreciated and was derelict at that point. We just need to make it look a little, a little better and, and more respectful of, of the cemetery. In that, we had a lot of discussion about, uh, at the, uh, Cemetery Committee about whether we would do a post and rail fence or whether we would do a post and slab fence, a chain wire, uh, chain link. And, um, another opportunity came up to use a, um, it's a, it's a horse, a horse fence that has a PVC type rail to it. Um, it's really not intended to, to hold back the, the weight that it's pretend, uh, potential for at four thousand pounds per, uh, per section. But it is just for aesthetics and to delineate the, the boundary between rest of the world and, and the cemetery where the Kerrigan Bush isn't. So the, um, the supplies are largely going to be coming from, um, local suppliers, uh, from Home Depot. Um, and if I can find another supplier that is at a better price from Home Depot, that's where we'll go. Those costs, um, for the supplies are approximately twelve thousand dollars. And, um, and then there would be installation. So we are certainly underneath the twenty, and I'd like to keep us under, well, under the twenty thousand that was budgeted for twenty twenty-five, but I do need approval to move ahead with this item.
And then you'll go out for bid, is that the idea? Or to who's to contract the fencer?
We do, um, Madam Chair, um, we did, I did reach out to, um, um, Manager Weisberg. Thank you. Um, and, uh, was provided with, uh, one of the, the county fencers. The only thing that I do need is, uh, fifty holes, uh, for posts to be pounded in. And, um, the tensioners and the, and the, um, the wires can be attached by, by staff.
So, um, we, we use a contract fencer, I believe, uh, so we don't have a price in on this. So we, we're not sure, uh, on it.
The, the gentleman that I did contact, uh, he was unable to provide, um, this fencing. He, he, uh, provided that answer this morning. He could not do this job, um, this year.
Counselor Alger?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So Ms. Court and Shell Allen, so on page two sixty-nine, right at the gate, we have the, uh, a different variety than what we're looking at for fence. I'm, I'm trying to think of the name for it, but rigid, rigid, uh, plastic, I guess. As opposed to the last page of our agenda is the, is the rolled stretched. With a spring, with a spring tensioner on it that keeps it tight. Okay, so we did make that determination. And then the posts themselves, they'll just be wood treated posts and then we'll paint them.
But, um, we're intending on not, not painting them, but sleeving them with PVC.
They're, they're PVC posts?
No, there will be, um, out of the Foothills County stockpile, there will be the posts. The wooden posts, uh, pressure treated.
Yeah.
And then sleeved with PVC.
Okay, I got you. Okay, thanks for that.
So I don't, I don't see a cost here, is there? Do you have a page I'm missing? Or is there a cost in our budget that we're allowing for this?
The budget for, the budget for this item is, um, twenty thousand dollars that was approved through the capital budget for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, to the chair, I'd give you the motion to approve the request from administration to proceed with the fencing at Gladys Union Cemetery up to the approved budget amount of twenty thousand dollars. Thanks.
Thank you, um, further discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's, on my list here, sorry. Yeah, let's do, um, F one. Uh, with Health and Safety Supervisor, uh, David Gregor, page two oh one of our agenda. Qualifications, orientation, and training policy and procedure. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Reeve and Council. Uh, for your review and, uh, consideration, I have the qualification, orientation, training, policy, and procedure. Um, the additions to this is, uh, gonna be providing a, a, a systematic approach to how we manage and track our health and safety training certificates within the county. It's been, uh, recommended by the Joint Health and Safety Committee, uh, just in late fall of last year. And we just got around doing, going through a little bit of changes. Um, they're all within the package. So if you have any questions, I'll take some questions.
All right, we'll open the floor up for any questions or, uh, the motion on page two oh one to approve as presented. Or another motion, if anyone's so inclined. Any questions at this time? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion, please. Anyone from the Health and Safety Committee that would like to make this motion? Counselor McHugh?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Can't find the recommended motion here from administration, but at any rate, I'd give you the, uh, motion to approve.
As presented, it says.
True, to approve as presented by, uh, Manager McGregor. Do remember going, uh, through this at Joint Health and Safety and, uh, appreciate that we're getting things streamlined and more easy to follow along with and track. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, further discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's deal with, uh, M L A Fowler, F three, Waddell, North Half, nine eighteen twenty-eight, West of the Fourth and South Half, sixteen eighteen twenty-eight, West of the Fourth. Bylaw forty-three slash twenty twenty-four, second and third reading, uh, page two twenty-six of our agendas. Go ahead, Administrator Fowler.
Good morning, Madam Reeve and Council. You state, this is, uh, request for second and third reading to bylaw forty-three slash twenty twenty-four. It's an undeveloped road allowance. And it's located approximately one point six kilometers east of Highway two and six kilometers southeast of the town of High River, within an undeveloped portion of five nine four Ave East. On June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, a public meeting was held to discuss the closure and purchase of the undeveloped road allowance. Council postponed their decision so that we could ask the applicant. Um, that should council not be in favor of granting their support of the closure and purchase? Would the applicant be willing to amend the request to closure and license of the subject road allowance? The applicant confirmed that they would. And then on July third, twenty twenty-four, council made the following decision. Bylaw forty-three twenty twenty-four was introduced into a meeting to authorize the closure for license of the undeveloped statutory road allowance located adjacent to the north boundary. Over the northwest and northeast quarters of Section nine, Township eighteen, Range twenty-eight, West four, subject to ministerial approval prior to second and third reading of the bylaw. So council granted first reading to that bylaw forty-three twenty twenty-four. And then in June of this year, June twentieth, um, the bylaw was approved and executed by the Minister of Transportation and Economic Corridors. And that was their only condition. So today, we're just requesting that council provide second and third reading to that bylaw or alternately postpone their decision for more information or to refuse the application at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll go to Counselor of the area, Counselor Seaworth, go ahead.
Thank you, looks like everything is in order and ready to proceed. The closure for license is certainly, uh, the better way to go than closure for sale. So I appreciate this. So I would give you second reading, uh, on that bylaw today.
Thank you, uh, further discussion on second reading? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And third reading on the bylaw, Deputy Reeve Waldorf?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through the chair to the floor, I'll give you third.
Thank you, further discussion? Ask for the vote, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, M L A Fowler. And we have, I think, one more here, we'll try to deal with while we've got our staff. Uh. No, I think that's it. Do we have anything else? F seven, okay, sorry, come on, come on forward, um. Director of Public Works, Mr. Kruger. Request for easement for future road dedication. That's our add-on item, uh, your handout F seven. Uh, Southwest, Southeast, seven, eighteen twenty-nine, West of the Fourth. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. As council may recall, the landowners did submit a previous request on, to council on June twenty-fifth, last Wednesday, to utilize the undeveloped road allowance, twenty-fourth Street East as legal access. Uh, the motion was lost. Today, the landowners of Southwest, Southeast, seven, eighteen twenty-nine seek council approval to register an easement agreement over the southwest quarter to access the southeast quarter. In addition, they are willing to execute and register a future road dedication caveat over the area of the easement. If council supports this access proposal, it would serve as legal access for the southeast quarter from Eighth Street East and allow for a building permit for the residents on the southeast quarter. Just would like to make counselor, um, aware of Section nine point one point five of the land use bylaw. It states that for purposes of this bylaw, an easement agreement or easement does not constitute legal access unless a future road dedication or utility right-of-way has been registered over the easement area and the county has become a party to the easement to ensure that it cannot be removed without council resolution. If, if a motion from council is supported, the landowner will execute an easement and road dedication agreement and registers, registered both documents by way of caveat. Granting this approval would allow the landowners to obtain a building permit and construct a house for their granddaughter in the southeast quarter. Attachments include a letter from the resident, along with a map and site plan. Also shown is the proposed building site and easement area. Proposed motions are also included within the staff report. If there's any questions, I'll, uh, try to answer those as well.
Thank you, I'll go to anyone who has any questions, Counselor Seaworth, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. Uh, thank you to Director Kruger for his work on this. It's certainly been around and about a few times and, and ways. Um, so yeah, the, the landlord just wants to build a house on this quarter. Um, and there's a long driveway already going in there and would just like to use that. So, uh, we've certainly had some concerns and some issues with easements over the years. Um, and certainly appreciate that we're kind of, uh, tightening that up and, uh, keeping it from being a concern down the road like we've, we've seen in the past. So this request here today is not just a simple, um, easement, as we have seen in the past. This is also a, uh, right-of-way agreement and a future road dedication agreement, uh, with the county being party to that. So we can prevent those issues we've seen in the past and, uh, and protect the county taxpayer through all of that additional pieces onto the easement. So I don't have a concern with this, so I would give you the motion to approve the request to execute and register an easement and access right-of-way agreement and future road dedication agreement over the easement area with the county, party to the agreements for the purpose of obtaining a building permit. Thank you.
All right, I'll open the floor up for discussion, Counselor Alger, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair, through the chair to the director. So what Mr. Seaworth said is in the future, should this road be developed, it's at the expense of the, of the landowners at the time? Of, of, uh, Southwest seven?
Through the reef to council, Alger, that's correct. If, if any development needs to happen on that road, it will be at the expense of the landowners.
Okay, and could, so where I'm going is, is, is if these two quarters became owners of two different people, can Southeast seven force Southwest seven to develop a road?
Uh, through the reef to council, Alger, I believe their responsibility of the road construction would be the owners of the southeast quarter.
The southeast quarter?
That's correct.
I got you. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for that.
Counselor McHugh?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And to the chair, I would speak in opposition to the motion on the floor. It all sounds good until land transfers occur and you have different title holders. And, uh, I'm not sure what the standard of the twenty-five meter wide proposed road is at this time. Um, but, uh, this is not typical, uh, the north-south chunk. Uh, on the road allowance to the east has previously been described as, as buildable and, um, in, in the future, this will potentially end up being an undesirable situation and, uh, can't see why we would, would, uh, drift from the norm. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Old.
Uh, thank you, Madam Reeve. This is very complex and they do have the other road allowance. I, I just think this is a future really expensive issue for the county when they get dragged into it. As has happened many, many times when owners change and this is a very long road. And it is so close to the other buildings on Southwest seven. It just gives me concern that there could be impact from, from that in the future. If there's a disagreement, if Southeast seven and. from from that in the future. If there's a disagreement, if Southeast 7 ends up having an operation in there that damages the road and and there's complex issues that arise from it. I'm just concerned of the amount of time and effort it will cause the county in the future if there's a dispute of any kind because they are going to be a party to it. So I I don't think I can support it unless some revelation to this comes forward to to change my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Yeah, I would say I'm really not hearing why the applicants are choosing this route with and not the undeveloped 24th Street East option. Other than, yeah, I'm not even, I don't think we have a reason other than this is their preferred easement that that they're requesting. So I wouldn't be able to support it at this time either. Counselor Seaworth, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just point out, so in the north east corner of that quarter, right where your hand is, there's a long strip runs north to south there. Looks pretty dry when this picture was taken, but that is a slew. So to build a driveway across there, I'm not sure if Alberta Environment is part of something like that or how that would work, but it certainly adds a level of complexity to trying to build across that.
You, Director Kruger, what's your thoughts on the buildability of of that road on 24th?
To Madam Reeve, the road portion, I believe, could be developed. It's the location of the house. As Counselor Seaworth mentioned, they wish to build that in the northwest corner of the southeast quarter. And to get there from the undeveloped road allowance, there's the ridge, there's a ravine with two ephemeral streams they would have to cross to get to that corner of the property. And as mentioned last week, the only request from council was the undeveloped road portion. They wouldn't develop it. So that motion was lost. If they, the only other option other than this would be for them to construct a municipal road on that piece. But as far as, I believe the location was chosen because of the location of the house. It's a good building site with access to the driveway on the southwest quarter.
So it is buildable or there's a number of challenges on 24th?
I believe they would most likely have to alter their building site. If they were to come from the undeveloped road portion, then there would still be concerns with the ravine and the ephemeral stream that runs on the east side of that ridge and within the ravine.
So then with regard to easement on 7, 18, 29, we'd have to wait for them to dedicate that at a future date for the remainder for a 30-meter-wide.
Madam Reeve, I believe that will be a requirement if this, if council supported it, that that they register that easement and road dedication at the same time. And we're, within the motion, we're proposing 25 meters width for that area. That gives the 15 meters away from the existing structures. Now, which would meet setbacks.
Counselor Oll.
Thank you. It definitely helps to understand that that drainage course is a more of a a landscape feature as well because of the elevations and such. But is there something different about this proposal that would keep us out of trouble for the future compared to the ones that we've had so many issues with, like the 15 years it took to solve the easement problems out west and numerous issues related to easement disputes? Is the remedy here with the three points sufficient to keep us out of trouble if there's a dispute between the landowners? I wonder if our maybe Director of Planning or our historian may comment on that in sense that we've just had so many issues just over and over and over again with easements. And if we're party to it, we get dragged in and the costs become ours. So is this something, the way it's structured or proposed here, does this give us more trouble or is this going to solve this for everyone and then we're just in the background? I'm curious for comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to you, Advisor Eva Cameron. Go ahead.
Morning, Council, foothills. So with the registration of an easement and then the caveat on top where the municipality would have the right to take the 25 meters, I would suggest you also register a development agreement on the on the two quarters to outline that they're responsible to build the road cost-wise. So that that's about as secure as you can get. The issue becomes if something happens between 7 and Southeast 7 and Southwest 7, maybe new owners, and the southeast of 7 can't afford to build the road to our standard at that time, that's where you run into a problem. So I'm not sure the condition of the existing road, whether it's very close to our minimum standard of seven meters. But that that is something that that would relay that or would put aside any possible problem in the future. So it'll be the financial ability of the individuals that, to me, could it be the only thing that might cause a problem if we have all these agreements in place?
Would we be better off making it a 30-meter easement right from the get-go?
I think Director Kruger has mentioned that the issue is with the house on or the buildings on the Southwest 7. If you take 30 meters, then those buildings will be five meters too close to the road right-of-way. Instead of 15 meters, there'll be 10 meters.
Counselor Oll.
Oh, thank, yeah, thank you. Was there any discussion about just surveying out a panhandle? For accessing Southeast 7 and then we just get this solved? And then they, and the other family can do a parallel road or have a common approach to their access their other buildings just to avoid problems in the future. And then they kind of have a single-family standard and keep it in the the title of Southeast 7 as opposed to the other. And then just avoid all these problems. And it's up to them. And then they don't have, they don't get driven to a higher standard. Just a thought.
I think maybe the first option is better for the county, but go ahead, Director Kruger.
Through the reef to council all, there was discussions with planning about what a boundary adjustment with a panhandle would look like. There, this is the route they chose.
Thank you. Counselor Seaworth.
Yeah, they've certainly talked about that and they've chosen all this route, I think. Primary reason is panhandles are a waste of land. There's nothing you can do with them. So that would be, I think, the reason from what I understand. And they certainly have that option going forward if if this doesn't work out, but this was the was the route they were wanting to go.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion on the floor from Counselor Seaworth. Or approval? Any other questions on this item? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote, all in favor. Opposed? Motion is lost. Let's try, are we prepared to do another motion? There's a motion to refuse then, I guess. Or we can amend something. Counselor Oll.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. I currently have several in Division 4 where the war is on. And it's a historic easement. And it just, it turns out to be a real contentious issue if anything happens to change the uses or other things in the future. So I think there might be another solution to access this through a panhandle. And and I would make a motion to refuse the request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion. Clarity, go ahead, Counselor Alger.
Sorry, could I just get clarity on Counselor Oll's? She was kind of soft-spoken there.
Madam Reeve, I would just refer to the staff report, the second page. A motion to refuse that council refuse the quest to register an easement with future road dedication as legal access for the purpose of obtaining a building permit.
All right. I think he was asking about your second part was just your complications that you've had in your area, correct?
Yes, and and that's not part of the motion. That was just currently, there are troubles in Division 4 that I was just referring to. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion for refusal. Further discussion. Ask for the vote, all in favor. Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Let's take a five-minute break here and then we'll come back and start with our miscellaneous items. Thank you, everyone. Let's take a five-minute break here and then we'll come back and start with our miscellaneous items. Thank you, everyone. Welcome back, Foothills County. We'll continue with our agenda. Let's go to item D, miscellaneous planning items, D one, two one nine, four three, six three, Alberta Limited, Hewlett, southeast, five, twenty-two, one, west of the fifth, development permit nineteen D two two two. Requests for approval of revised site plan, page three of our agenda, Director Hemingway.
Thank you, Madam Reeve, and good morning, council. The first request for you this morning is a development permit amendment. You had already provided approval for back in March of 2020. The applicants have also received a time extension on the construction of this development permit and have contemplated some revisions to the particularly to the large building. They're proposing now three smaller buildings, not initially approved sixty-five thousand square foot primary building. It's now three buildings totaling thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand square feet in primarily the same location. There is some amendments to the access points and the driveways moving slightly south in order to allow a little bit more room and space to the landowner to the north. The staff report provides a great deal of detail about the proposal and the amendments. And you'll see on page eight of your agenda packet, option one, it accepts, it's requesting council consider accepting the revisions to the development plans and lists them there. Other than that, the conditions really remain the same and the development permit is simply acknowledging a change of the of the buildings on the north from one large building to three smaller buildings. You certainly have the ability to consider postponing this and requiring a public meeting should you feel so inclined. The applicants have indicated that they are preferences to move forward with these revisions from council.
Thank you, Councilor Alger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no issues with this revision. I actually like this layout better than the original one. I don't know if you all recall when we did the public hearing on this the first time that the, there was only one neighbor and it was the neighbor of the north that was concerned about the size of the building and that neighbor has since moved. As I read through this, like I said, I like the, I like the splitting up into smaller buildings and less square footage and they've spoken quite in-depth as to screening and driveways and fire and all the things that need to go along with an application of this size. So I have no, no issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you provide the motion then?
I'll provide motion. Yeah, everybody's ready. I'll wait to hear from.
Okay, we'll wait to hear anyone else wishing to weigh in on this application. I don't see any, so I'll go back to you, Councilor Alger.
Then I will give you the motion, option one, to accept the revisions to the development plan.
Thank you.
With the, with the minor setback. Acknowledge the current locations and grant the relaxation of the setback.
All right. Thank you for that. Further discussion on the motion? I'll ask for the vote, all in favor. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. D two, Rimrock Cattle Company Limited, northwest, five, nineteen twenty-nine, west of the fourth and north half, six, nineteen twenty-nine, west of the fourth, bylaw forty-five slash twenty twenty-five and bylaw forty-six slash twenty twenty-five, second and third reading, page forty-five of our agenda. Go ahead, Director Heming.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. What we're requesting for you today is second and third reading on two separate bylaws, forty-five and forty-six. Council may recall the application this past month. Council granted first reading to two separate bylaws. First one, authorizing amendments to our land use district to include definitions and to amend several definitions for an anaerobic digester facility. The bylaw forty-six, twenty twenty-five allowed for a site-specific amendment to the agricultural land use district on the subject lands to allow for an anaerobic digester facility and allow for a maximum height of sixteen meters for a flare stack for the purposes of an anaerobic bi-gester facility and as a permitted use. All conditions imposed at first reading on both bylaws have been completed. We are now requesting second and third reading on bylaw forty-five, twenty twenty-five and second and third reading on bylaw forty-six, twenty twenty-five. You will find copies of both of these bylaws in your staff report, attached to your staff report in your agenda package, starting on page fifty-one and then moving to page fifty-three. Happy to answer any questions if council has.
Thank you. I'll open the floor for any questions. Uh, Councilor Seaworth.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. Where to start? I guess I would, I would bring up a question of procedural fairness in relation to the public hearing we had a few weeks ago. Then this is where my concern is moving forward and why I can't support second and third reading of that today. Along with, I'm sure others, I was a little bit surprised at the public hearing that we were out of the blue, turning mics off. For those who are presenting with concerns or speaking to it. Yes, our, our provisions are that residents are given five minutes to make their presentation. But the turning off of mics was done without any notice, never been done in this room before. Nobody had any idea that that was going to happen, so a little bit taken aback. So with that in mind, I did go back and re-watch the public hearing. And there was at least one person who was not given five minutes. Mic was turned off. A fair bit short of that. So I am concerned about that and I think we need to, we need to do the public hearing right. So I would be looking to postpone second and third reading and reopen the public here, public hearing. I'm guessing maybe August twenty-seventh might be a date that's available, but I would look to administration for guidance on that.
Thank you. Can I ask specifically whose mic was turned off in less than five minutes?
I didn't get the name of the person, but it was, I believe it was the first person that, from the community that spoke.
After reviewing the hearing, I was under the impression and I did give several extra minutes to residents when they weren't finished speaking. Mics were turned off if they went over their extended time and some of them I gave as much as three extra times to speak to it. I believe everyone was given an opportunity. In previous counselors, as far back as the two previous Reeves, three previous Reeves to myself, there was always a time limit given and mics were shut off and no extended time was ever given to some of the residents after their five minutes. And I think some of the counselors here experienced that. I think we were generous as a council in making sure everyone was heard. I even went out to the gallery and asked at the end if anyone wished to speak that hadn't spoke. There was many, I think, concessions giving, given to residents with regard to not repeating what had already been spoken to. This was a land use hearing and I think council allowed topics from all, all parts of this application to come forward, not just land use, which we could have kept it to land use. So I, I think we did our due diligence. So I would not be in favor of the postponement of this. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Councilor Alger.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I can't speak to the exact times, but I think we were more than fair. We did overages, as you said, to numerous residents that were speaking. This is very similar to RMA. When we speak, they're very passionate, pleased for some of the things we speak about and you have a lot of time and and when the, when that time is up and the microphone shut down and in RMA, there is no time extensions, no, no add-ons, no extras. You have your lot of time and that's it. So I think we were very fair. I would say even, I would say numerous of the residents that we gave well over three minutes extra time and and some of the key proponents of, of the, of the application. Those folks, yeah, they were given ample time as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Deputy Reeve Waldorf, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Through the chair to the floor. I too cannot support the motion. As a matter of fact, I think people heard the beeper go off on the five minutes and people were allowed to speak longer. And I do recall the gallery being asked if anyone else was interested in speaking. So as I say, I think we we did a good service to our people that wanted to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Councilor McQ.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. To the chair. Not speaking to the motion, just to comment, but I, I think five minutes is, is a guideline. And so I, I appreciate that that that's out there as a guideline that would help people prepare to try to make their presentation in five minutes. But if it's going to take longer than five minutes, it's going to take longer than five minutes. And they should have that opportunity to say their piece. I think that most of the residents were very kind in allotting time back and forth to try to extend and and lots of people waved in order to not repeat. So I, I guess my comment is, is that perhaps we have to look at the bylaw. The, the use of the timer, this is the first time I can remember and that I remember that we've ever used a timer. I'm, I'm not privy to what they did two or three Reeves ago. But absolutely, the general public needs to have the ability to say their piece. If it takes longer than five minutes and they're not repeating, then they need to be allotted that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. So, Councilor Seaworth, speaking to your motion.
Yeah, I guess just there's a lot of other things added in there, but I would just point out when you go back and watch it, look at the timer. That speaker was very definitely cut short. Microphone was just turned off. And when we advertised the time a little to five minutes and they need to be given five minutes.
Yeah, and just so everyone knows, we don't often have a beeper go off, but in all of council hearings, I do watch the clock and I do have a timer with me that I do try to keep everyone to five minutes. I think at the, at the very onset of the hearing, we, we did say the reason and we always say the reason. We try to give, keep everyone to five minutes, just so that everyone has a chance to speak. I believe the one person that I may have cut off already had an opportunity to speak three times prior and I went to the gallery to ask again if that person would like to speak. And they were given extra time. So I can't think of anyone, Councilor Seaworth, without a name. But I do believe on the land use portion, which is what this hearing was about, there was ample time given. But anyone else wishing to provide comment? So we have a motion for postponement from Councilor Seaworth. Further discussion on the motion? Ask for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is defeated. And I will note that Counselor Oll will not be voting as she was not in attendance for the hearing. So I'd look for another motion to move forward. Councilor Alger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, a motion to move forward, I'll consider the request of council, which is to grant second reading on bylaw forty-five, twenty-five. We'll start there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion for second from Councilor Alger. Further discussion? All in favor? Councilor McQ, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just gonna hopefully I got the right one. It's speaking in opposition to the motion on the floor. In principle, I'm not against a biodigester. I think the concept is sound. What, what I am opposed to is that this biodigester has changed form and format from what was originally proposed. A feedlot with a biodigester, dairy barn with a biodigest, biodigester, a swine operation with a biodigester. These are all ancillary. The biodigester would be considered ancillary to the main operation. So what we have here now is we have a biodigester that is being proposed to be separated from the main feedlot and become its own entity. So the site-specific amendment that has been attached to ensure that the feedlot manure is delivered to the adjacent, because now it is no longer ancillary, it is adjacent. to ensure that the feedlot manure is delivered to the adjacent, because now it is no longer ancillary, it is adjacent. At the end of the day, I actually believe is not a good idea. Completely changes the business model. Now, the biodigester, if manure is not available for some reason, sits idle. It's just extremely difficult for me to not have magcan visions popping up in my head. And natural gas goes up and the magcan plant shuts down. Carbon credits go away and the biodigester shuts down. The, the business model is is, is really suspect when you have to have an entity, an industrial application of this sort, only be feasible with carbon credits. The addition of organic materials from Calgary, while that is now no longer ancillary to the feedlot whatsoever, this is an industrial application. If this biodigester was located in the industrial corridor, or more strategic, we could have one regional biodigester. Beef manure could come from Rimrock. Beef manure could come from Western. Beef manure could come from Chinook, could come from any source and not be limited. Your organics could come from any source and not be limited. And we would not be putting the transportation concerns and and while we are outside the buffer zone for residential, it is so close and contentious, obvious. I, I just think that we've done an injustice to the biodigester, Rimrock and the municipality as a whole. This is industrial. It is no longer an ancillary operation to a feedlot. And cannot speak in favor of the motion on the floor. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion for second? Deputy Reeve Waldorf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Through the chair to the floor. We heard in all the discussions that the manure will be coming exclusively from the feedlot. And that liquid organic waste would be coming from outside the area. I guess clarity in terms of industrial versus agriculture. Government of Alberta recently passed Bill forty-four, which is a legislative amendment that aims to modernize the management of organic waste in the agricultural sector. The bill seeks to enhance clarity and provide regulatory certainty for the biogas industry. Allowing farmers to supplement their fertilizer programs with organic materials. It also addresses the management of digestates, the material remaining from biogas conversion process, and aims to divert organic waste from landfills to biogas plants, generating heat and electricity or refining it into renewable natural gas. I, I understand the bill is part of a broader effect effort to provide farmers with access to additional nutrient sources to grow crops sustainably. So all in all, I don't see it as industrial. You have hundreds of semis coming in and out of the food processing plant on Highway two A. That's industrial. This isn't. And as they say, it's not news to us that the manure is coming exclusively from the feedlot and the liquid digestate. So I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion for second? I guess I would bring up maybe some of the concerns that were mentioned, that there is a reclamation requirement here. The company is a, is required to put up a major bond for reclamation. So if this does not continue, there is a requirement as part of their conditions from the province that it be completely reclaimed. And that I read in the conditions, there was also a condition that was put on, an extra condition that no additional manure be allowed to be brought in from an adjacent feedlot. So I'm not sure when you have something to this magnitude and you speak about putting it in an industrial corridor and wanting to bring in manure from all other sources, that that's maybe a a bit of a contradiction to your comment. We also have, I, I believe the egg minister coming out with a new bill with regard to this type of processing on, on a on an agriculture, as an agricultural use within Alberta to look at, to allow for digestate and, and these types of facilities to come forward. I think that's out of our purview. What we're being asked today is to look at the bylaws for site-specific amendment and for land use. That's certainly, I guess, something that could be taken up with the province, but for today, this is what is before us today. So I would support second reading. Want it? Councillor Seaworth?
Thank you, Madam Reeve. Through the Reeve, I guess probably to Director Hemingway. Condition four, so the development permit shall dictate that all manure for the digester facility be processed from the adjacent feedlot. Now, my recollection of the numbers is that the biodigester through the province is approved for eighty thousand tons. But the feedlot through NRCB is only permitted for eighty thousand tons. I might have the numbers wrong, but essentially the biodigester is approved for more tonnage of manure than what the feedlot is. So my question would be then, if the biodigester was to start hauling in manure from one of the other area feedlots, does their approval from AEP trump this condition on the development permit?
If I may, I'm not sure I fully understand the question. There was a conversation during the public hearing about the different numbers of manure that could be accessed by the biodigester and it has to do with weight. Was measured with tons and it, and it's done that way in order to accommodate for different moisture levels within the manure. There was no intention to bring manure in from other locations other than the feedlot. And the application that was made to Alberta Environment spoke to that issue. But while there was a discrepancy in the numbers, it was based only because you can't dictate the weight of the manure coming from the feedlot. Changes over the year, over the periods of the year. I, so I, just to clarify that issue. Now, your second question. The development permit will specifically state the manure needs to come from the adjacent feedlot. The, the, in the Alberta Environment Approval does not speak to that. So it is not in conflict to the Alberta Environment Approval. And because it cannot be in conflict, the environmental approval. And the environmental approval doesn't speak to where the location of the manure is coming from. So I would suggest that if there is an amendment to where the manure, if, if the proponents of the biodigester wish to bring in manure from other feedlots, they would have to reapply for a new development permit, as was requested by council in the site-specific amendment. And I'm not confident in whether or not there would be a necessity for an amendment to the Alberta Environment Approval. I don't believe there would be.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Do you? Anyone else speaking to the motion for second? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote. All in favor of second reading? Opposed? Motion is carried. Motion to go to third. Martian, sorry, motion for third. Councillor Castell?
I'll give you a motion for third on bylaw forty-five slash twenty twenty-five.
Motion for third. Thank you. Councillor Seaworth, speaking to the motion.
Yeah, and I just would speak in opposition to the motion proceeding at this time. I think we need to get our procedural fairness looked after first. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And speaking in opposition to the motion on the floor. Feedlots have come a long way. I, I don't know who's familiar with the operations of a feedlot or, or how the ins and outs are, but right now is silage season. So it's not unusual to see two cutters going and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, triple axle silage trucks running, running long distances. We have trucks running all the way from Picture Butte to Mossley. We have silage trucks running from CIL Blackie, just east of Blackie to Chinook. As I said earlier, I think that one large biodigester on the landscape is more responsible than every feedlot in the municipality or just outside of the municipality having a biodigester. Yeah, it's a long ways to haul in, but then you are also hauling digestate or other products out. That's a good use and efficient use and services the area regionally as opposed to one little specific area. Concentrates the road traffic to the appropriate roads and limits the impact on a town that is very close. That's not really alleviated by, by the industrial corridor, still in close proximity to High River. But in my mind, makes much more sense to have one large industrial digester in an industrial area that can service the entirety of the area and lessen the impact overall. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to motion for third reading? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote for, to go to third. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. All right, let's go to D three, land use bylaw sixty slash twenty fourteen, proposed amendment bylaw forty-seven slash twenty twenty-five, second and third reading, page fifty-four of our
Madam Reeve, do we have to do a motion for bylaw forty-six? Or were they together?
I understood they were together. You want them separately?
Yes, Madam Reeve, I do need second and third reading on bylaw forty-six twenty twenty-five, which is actually the bylaw that allows for the site-specific amendment when council just approved was the amendments to the land use district and land use bylaw. So you'll see those motions on page forty-six of your staff report. Bylaw forty-fourty-six is the site-specific amendment, the agricultural land use rules to allow for the biodigester facility and that flare stack height as a permitted use on the subject lands.
All right, those were together in my agenda, so thank you for that clarity.
Apologize.
So we have a motion proposed options in our agenda for bylaw forty-six twenty twenty-five. Further comments or anyone willing to provide second reading? Councillor Castell?
I'll give you second reading on bylaw forty-six slash twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Further discussion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried and third reading on bylaw forty-six slash twenty twenty-five. Anyone willing to provide third? Councillor Alger?
Happy to give you that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. I believe that does conclude it now. D three, land use bylaw sixty slash twenty fourteen, proposed amendment bylaw forty-seven slash twenty twenty-five, second and third reading, page fifty-four of our agenda. Go ahead, Director Hemingway.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. Council may recall, we held a public hearing on June twenty-fifth, so just two weeks ago. Where council granted first reading on bylaw forty-seven twenty twenty-five, authorizing amendments to the land use bylaw specifically to the general industry district, where the development authority may grant a variance of up to ninety percent of the setback requirements from Highway two A to both existing and proposed developments on lot one thirteen, ones through thirteen, line ninety, one, two, two, five, five. Those are the A built subdivisions that back onto the highway. This variance is intended to ensure alignment with the former DC two development regulations and approvals granted at these times of their initial development. Council went through the public hearing and granted first reading. No changes to the proposed bylaw amendments were, were directed by council. As such, we have provided you with a copy of the draft bylaw as well as the proposed changes in your staff report. They're at the very end of the general industry district shown in red on fifteen to eight four. And we would please request a motion of second and third reading for bylaw forty-seven twenty twenty-five.
Councillor Seaworth, go ahead.
Thank you. Everything looks in order and looks good. So I'd give you a motion for second reading for bylaw forty-seven twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Councillor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to the chair, I would speak in support of the motion. Just highlighting some of the permitted uses, agricultural processing and distribution, export services, green reuse, green material reuse, storage site, industrial storage and warehousing. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any, so we'll ask for the vote for second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. And third reading on this bylaw, please. Councillor Alger gives us that. Further discussion? Ask for the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. D four, direct control district development permit twenty-five D one thirty and twenty-five D one thirty-one. Request for delegation and of development authority for the summer twenty twenty-five, page sixty-one of our agenda. Go ahead, Director Hemingway.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. This time of year, council sometimes sees this report where we are requesting council's consideration to delegate the development authority to the development officer for review and rendering a decision on applications during the twenty twenty-five summer break. We feel that there may be two direct control district development permits that could have decisions over the summer break. We have provided you with some detail on them in your staff report. Just to do some background, you are the development authority for direct control development permits. And as such, they are considered permitted and not subject to appeal. However, should you direct authority to the developments officer, they do become subject to appeal. Particularly if there is no, if there are specific directions provided to the development authority and they're not followed. In one of the cases, there is a request for relaxation of setbacks. That is an application for a one point one-two acre direct control thirty-one acre parcel, which is proposing the construction of a two thousand four hundred and seventy-five square foot building for a new business. And it is requesting a relaxation of the setbacks to the west and south property lines for a proposed building of, of no more than one point five meters versus the fifteen meters in the district. This would be a ninety percent variance setback. Again, the, it is not unusual for a development officer on an existing structure in a not direct controlled building to issue a ninety percent relaxation setbacks, but we do not have that permission on proposed or new structures. And I'm happy to answer what questions I can with respect to that application. It has not been considered complete to date. There's also some information on another one directly south of that, interestingly enough. Bigger parcel proposing a, another business with a five thousand seventy hundred, five thousand seventy-five square foot quon- quonset to be used for storage. So both these applications are directly beside each other in the Black Diamond Industrial Corridor. Council feels somewhat comfortable. We have provided you with a suggested motions beginning on the bottom of page sixty-three of your agenda package. which basically allows what you're doing is delegating the development authority to the development officer with respect to these two development permits if they come ready for decision during your summer break. And that only goes till August twenty sixth, at which point they'd come back to you. We've also requested some direction from you with respect to the requested setback on the northern application, where they're looking for a ninety percent relaxation of setback to the south and west property lines for a new building.
All right, thank you. Counselor Castell.
Thank you, Madam Reeve, and to Director Hemingway. On the twenty five D where they want the ninety percent re- relaxation or the setback, is that something that we would normally do in this kind of a industrial?
Go ahead. We don't have a lot of concerns about it. Now, we don't have all the information we need, but it actually isn't, it works quite well on those two sides of the lot. So if we were the development authority and we had all the required information, we would, as development authority, would feel comfortable with it.
Okay, hearing that, I will give you a motion for twenty five D one thirty direct control with the required setback of, well, with relaxation.
No, no, we're asking for, to give authority to the development officer to render decisions.
Yeah, we don't have a completed application.
Oh, you said that. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yep, you're right. So, yeah, give the development officer the control over that.
Right, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Would council feel comfortable with us contemplating the proposed ninety percent relaxation? We're gonna grant it, which is.
Yeah, I, I think I'd be comfortable with that, but I'll go to the mover, Counselor Castell. Are you comfortable with the setback?
I'm fine with that. It's probably they want to get on with this and we're not going to be here. Thanks.
Further discussion? Ask for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Did, did we do both applications? The, the motion we had proposed was for both?
Yeah, I was considering both. Counselor Castell, you're including both, correct, in your motion?
Sure, I will. Thank you.
All right, thank you. D five Timberstar Inc., southeast twenty seven twenty twenty nine, west of the fourth, request to name subdivision road, page seventy one of our agenda. Director Hemingway.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. This is a road naming application. What we're actually doing is extending an existing road that's already called Green Haven View, and the road is extending around the corner, and we're continuing the name Green Haven View. Unfortunately, a map is not very dark, so it's hard to see. I'm not sure if you can see it on page seventy seven. If you really squint, you can see Green Haven View comes along the south, and then it goes to the west side and then goes north. So the G I S mapping has no concerns with the proposed internal road extension, the name of the road extension. They would also like council to consider that due to the development, Green Haven Place will no longer be a cul-de-sac as implied by the road type name. I'm not sure if that's particularly been your purview, but that's your choice. Does anybody see okay, or is there any, like, can I bring up a map for you that's better?
It's not a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so Green Haven Place, which you actually can't see at all. Right in the middle on the west side of the development. And you can see the little tiny green here, but so that's going to end. That attaches to Green Haven View, so it's no longer a cul-de-sac.
Hey, Counselor Oll.
Just the logistics question that was posed to us, which should we just pop over to do in the subdivision first before we name the roads? Just cart before the horse a little bit there, but I have no comments on the, on the road naming, just on the request that came to us in this agenda item. Thank you.
Sorry, was there a question?
To council and to, to the, where we're heading with this item, should we do the subdivision approving authority first and then name the roads?
I'm, I'm not concerned if council does.
It doesn't matter?
No.
Okay.
The road will not be there.
I was just. In, in reading the staff report, that question was asked of us, and I just brought it up. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the Chair, oh, to the Chair, thank you to Counselor Oll for her comments on process. But the answer for myself, I would give you the motion to prove the name change as suggested, and the answer to that would be on page seventy two. Well, it's not really three paragraphs down, but a half and two paragraphs down. So it explains the name change, typically the elimination of the cul-de-sac would require the name Green Haven Place to be updated to change out the word place, which is dedicated to describing a cul-de-sac. However, in this instance, the G I S mapping department is requesting council provide acknowledgement of the word place, accepting it as a through road, through road as opposed to a cul-de-sac in order to avoid required changes to fourteen addresses within the existing development located along Green Haven Place. And that is my rationale for giving you the motion to approve as recommended. Thanks.
Sorry, I, so you, you want the word cul-de-sac taken out and have through road? I'm sorry if I didn't understand you.
I, I'm, I'm just quoting that as long as we do what is suggested in the report, then we don't have to change fourteen names and we end up with a, so the, it is way more, it is more convenient to acknowledge that it is no longer a cul-de-sac than change fourteen addresses.
Okay, so you're fine with the motion as written?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted clarity. Anyone else? We have a motion for option one from Counselor McHugh. Ask for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item D six two one nine four two six five Alberta Limited, Q Northwest twenty twenty two, two west of the fifth, request to name subdivision and internal subdivision road, page seventy eight of our agenda. Director Hemingway.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. As you stated, we're looking for council support of the name of the subdivision of Lunar Springs Estates, and then the proposed road names Lunar Lane West and Lunar Spring, which I really like, Lunar Lane West, and Lunar Springs Crescent West, which is not as, doesn't roll off your tongue quite as well. We have provided you with the full staff report with respect to the proposal on option one, or options to approve the subdivision name and the proposed road names. And you can see your mapping. This is just south of twenty two X, west of the city on one of approximately one hundred and seventy six street west. You can see a letter by the applicant. And there was, there is some information from our G I S mapping department indicating if council does not support the names, then numbering could be achieved. However, there is, I think it was two, two existing addresses would need to be changed.
Thank you, Counselor Oll.
Thank you for that update, and I would concur with the proposed names, and I am not in agreement with changing other addresses, and this is a new development. I prefer numbers, but in this case, I prefer not to have to change the other people's addresses. And it looks like they've come to a agreement related to adding the west. I think it's getting a bit long, but I see they did a full circulation too of other municipalities so that there's no confusion with urgency response with the names, and so I would give you a motion to proceed with the proposed request. We have part one and part two, so I guess we'll deal with them separately, and then if you're ready, I would provide you that first, that first option with the, the motion to proceed when you're ready for, for that.
Hey, thank you. I don't see any other comments, so we'll go to you for part one, proposed subdivision name motion.
Okay, so moved.
Hey, thank you. Further discussion? Ask for the vote. All in favor? Motion carries and part two, proposed road name.
Madam Reeve, I would move that one as well.
Okay, thank you. For option one approval, further discussion? Ask for the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. D six two one nine four two six five Alberta Limb, oh, sorry, did that one. D seven Dunham, southeast twenty seven twenty twenty nine, west of the fourth, request to waive six month resubmission waiting period, page eighty four of our agenda. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. This is a request by the landowner and the agent in Green Haven Estates to have a waiver of the requirement to wait six months to reapply. This application specifically was about a site-specific amendment that council had on February nineteenth, twenty twenty five to allow for non-compliant wastewater holding tanks versus the requirement for upgraded individual wastewater septic systems within the Green Haven area element. We have provided you with suggested motions for your consideration and option A approval and an option B refusal. I'm just going to point out that there is a letter requesting this waiver of this motion on page eighty nine of your agenda package. And as well, you can see the refusal that we did grant on page ninety.
Thank you. Counselor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm prepared to give you the motion to waive the six months required waiting period. This is kind of urgent and emergent in nature that they get this problem solved. And, and just leave it at that. That's, we're trying to solve a wastewater and sewer problem here. There's a pool involved and finding a solution that I would say is emergent. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have a motion from Counselor McHugh. Any further discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We have a few things enclosed, so at this time, I would like to take a motion to go into closed. Counselor Alger, all in favor? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Welcome back, Foothills County. We did have a discussion G2 intergovernmental relations. I'll go to you, Councillor Oll for your motion.
Thank you. I move that the G2 report by administration be acknowledged.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. And we are just before lunch here. Let's take an early, little bit early lunch. Motion for lunch. Councillor Costello, all in favor? Motion carries. See you back at one o'clock, everyone.
Welcome back, Foothills County. We did have a discussion, G2 intergovernmental relations. I'll go to you, Councillor Oll for your motion.
Thank you. I move that the G2 report by administration be acknowledged.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. And we are just before lunch here. Let's take an early, little bit early lunch. Motion for lunch. Councillor Castile, all in favor. Motion carries. See you back at 1 o'clock, everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to our council meeting. We'll continue on with our agenda. Uh, we do have subdivisions, so I'd look for a motion to go into subdivision approving authority. Councillor Castell, all in favor. Motion carries. E one Timberstar Inc., Southeast thirty seven, sorry, twenty seven, twenty twenty nine, west of the fourth, request for subdivision. Greenhaven Estates, phase four, page ninety one of our agenda. Director Heming.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. I just need to get to the right page here. Moving fast on me. Right. Council, before you, you see the subdivision approval request for Greenhaven Estates, phase four. So this is currently a ten point three six acre parcel at the north end of the development. Then is now part of an area structure plan approved by council. Land use has been approved. Well, what we're looking for is subdivision approval. Uh, the subdivision approval would create the total of nine new one. Sorry, about one acre country, country estate, country estate residential sub district aid lots. With a two, twen- zero point two three acre public utility lot. All development will be serviced by uh, the water treatment facility owned by the county and the distribution. And wastewater is through the installation of private, high efficiency engineered package tertiary treatment systems. All access is directly off Greenhaven Drive. All land uses are in place. You can see the history of the applications on your agenda package. I won't go through that. And you can see the subdivision design illustrated on the top of page ninety three. And then look at the tiny little lots in Oqotoks right behind it. So it's just an interesting perspective, I find.
Mm hmm.
What's? Um, so this subdivision is contemplated under area structure plan, and I said the land use is in place. Uh, I have reviewed all the conditions proposed as recommended. Uh, subdivision conditions, and I'm satisfied with them. Also, you'll notice the Public Works had a number of uh, conditions, all of which have been translated into conditions at subdivision. I'll point out a couple. Uh, when it comes to the water treatment plant, of course, we do require our community sustainability fee to be paid, and that's eleven thousand dollar, three hundred dollar per lot fee. In addition, for Greenhaven, we have, since we've taken over the water treatment system, required a five thousand dollar per lot. Um, fee to contribution fee for the water treatment and distribution system. Um, and we, so we've been doing that for quite some time. In addition, for these phases four and five, we have had the developer pay for uh, the analysis on what upgrades are necessary to the water treatment plant to accommodate this development. And uh, we are continuing that, so we have an understand, the developer initially paid forty five thousand dollars or forty nine thousand dollars for uh, the engineering analysis to determine what was necessary to upgrade the pump in this well, and there's two wells, so well number one. And now we have to undertake the work, and we have quotes and a full understanding of the cost of doing that work. And so I have suggested a cost recovery fee of a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover the costs of that work. That is for both for phases four and five. It's not per phase, and it's not a per lot phase. It's just a one fee for um, covering the cost, a cost recovery fee of the work that we need to do on that well number one. Primarily, what that includes is the bringing in of new electrical conduit and power to the well system to power a larger pump that has to be put down the well. The water's there, but the pump is insufficient. Um, so the cost of that work has been analyzed, and it's uh, less than two hundred and fifty thousand as we stand now, but things change, and I wanted to be conservative. Um, if the costs are less, then I will only charge the developer what the actual costs are. As such, unless council has any questions, I would request subdivision approval. Oh, I should also explain, there is a letter. Sorry. Did read these yesterday. So we have a letter in your package as appendix, appendix B from the Greenhaven Estates Homeowners Association. And the developer has also provided a letter in your package in response to the letter from the homeowners association. As such, I would please request subdivision approval, phase four of nine units in Greenhaven Estates.
Thank you, Councillor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chair to the Development Authority. Uh, do we have somebody from Public Works on? I'm, I'm just looking for the nine meter, um. The nine meter public utility lot in regards. Where that one is got, I'm, I'm looking for a page that shows where this nine meter utility lot is required for the uh, drainage.
Right.
Do you have Public Works, but if we go to the subdivision plan on page one oh five of your agenda package, it's the balloon strip.
Did you want to add anything, Director Kruger?
Thank you, Madam Reeve. Um, through the reef to customer queue, that's correct, is the blue strip between lot seven and six. There is currently there uh, overland drainage right away. Um, that's three meters wide, I believe. It's not wide enough. The top portion of that, the northern portion of that is actually nine meters. And that's the width that we would need the full length to be extended to. So there is currently an overland drainage right away. It's not wide enough to accommodate uh, the infrastructure that needs to be there. So the nine meter is the reasoning um, for that.
Okay, thanks for that, and uh, just we're gonna have to take three meters more. Does, does that cause issue with those lots? Side yard setbacks? That we're going to be adjacent to, that's not going to be a factor?
No, it's designed in with the lots.
Okay, so that sounds good. So this drainage, uh, as it comes into the original phase, is that going to be draining into the original drainage in phase? I guess it's phase one, two, and three.
Uh, through the reef to customer queue. Um, so as many is probably aware, that drainage is not function, functioning as was designed. There's a open grade manhole on the south end of it, where the water's supposed to enter, and when it enters there, it crosses a series of uh, in-ground storm pipes and actually goes, it bypasses the, the the Foothills County Water Plant. It goes across Greenhaven View Drive, and then it kind of daylights again. Um, halfway through Greenhaven View on the back end and within the ER, where it flows through the natural drainage there, so we will require that whole drainage to be repaired. So if that's functioning properly, it should not enter phase one of Greenhaven um, at all. It will continue to flow south towards the, the the ER past the water treatment plant on the south end.
Okay, thank you for that. And so just bringing that concern up, because uh, I'm hoping that uh, there is some work to do in the original phases. And I believe we're close to having that tendered out, and I'm hoping that work was delayed last year, and I'm hoping that work starts uh, starts this summer. So, you know, I would just recognize the letter from the homeowners association and recognize the responses from the developer and uh, the developer's agent. Um, this has absolutely been a trying development. Um, when you have developers change and uh, build out still occurring and water challenges and drainage challenges, temperatures rise, so I just have to believe that uh, this is finally all going to come together in the end. Maybe we end up with one homeowners association, maybe we end up with two homeowners associations. Um, maybe they all amalgamate in the end. Um, but I'm hoping that we can all work together and solve all the problems that are within this area. And uh, with that, uh, looked through these conditions, and I was going to ask through the chair to Director Hemingway, I the, the five thousand dollar additional lot tie, I was gonna liken that to a levy, so I, I think we can just leave that alone. I think that was a creative solution without uh, making it too complicated. I'm fine with that. And I would give you the uh, motion for first reading, including the recommended conditions. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion. Um, it would be, um. Okay, as on page ninety seven.
Ninety seven, start Sunday seven.
Yeah. To approve the subdivision, okay. Um, further discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote, all in favor. Thank you, motion carries. E two Timberstar Inc., Southeast twenty seven, twenty twenty nine, west of the fourth, request for subdivision. Greenhaven Estates, phase five, page one thirty seven, Director Heming.
Thank you again, Madam Reeve. This is the twenty two point one six acre parcel on the west side of the development. Um, this completes the entirety of the quarter section for development. And this is a subdivision request of phase five, which will create fourteen new point eight acre to one point one three country estate residential sub district aid parcels, three MR parcels, little strips, and one one point three six acre environmental reserve parcel. The subdivision will also complete the construction of the internal road network. All lots are serviced through the communal existing water treatment plant and distribution system owned by the county. Wastewater is provided through private high efficiency systems. This development is contemplated within the Greenhaven Estates area structure plan as amended. Land use is in place. All access will be off the internal road. I have reviewed all the conditions uh, as proposed and have no concern as they're submitted to you. You will see option one approval starts on page one forty two of your agenda package. And again, I will point out to you that the homeowners association has provided a letter of concern, and the developer has also provided a, a letter of response to the letter of concern. And if council has no questions, I would request subdivision approval.
Thank you, Councillor McHugh.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and to the Chair would just basically reiterate the last subdivision and acknowledge the letters from the homeowners association and the concerns that go along with that. And the responses from the developer. So I won't repeat myself. I would give you the motion for approval with recommended conditions, one to fourteen.
Fourteen, one to twelve? I thought one to twelve.
Sorry, fourteen country state lots, twelve conditions. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Ask for the vote, all in favor. Motion carries. E three Branded Peak Holdings Limited, Southwest fourteen twenty two, west of the fifth, and Southeast fourteen twenty two, west of the fifth. Uh, requests for boundary adjustment, page one eighty one of our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. This is one of those boundary adjustments that you see sometimes. Um, this is in Reed Miller's division. This is just east of Diamond Valley on four oh two. The application proposes the one is a one hundred and forty eight acre parcel and an one hundred and fifty acre parcel. The one hundred and fifty acre parcel is going to swallow most of the one hundred and forty, leaving a twenty one point zero two acre country agricultural parcel in the northwest corner. Best site plan is on one eighty two. Um. So no land uses are changing. Accesses are all generally existing. Um, and basically no new parcels are, are being created, although it looks like it, it is not true. One thing I would point out in the conditions, we neglected to include a condition with respect to a agreement for acquisition of land for five meters along the full south boundary of both parcels. And then along the full west boundary of the part, both parcels, so five meters along the south and the west to be taken by way of road widening agreement and then to be registered by caveat on the title. Council may be aware, four oh two is a very busy road, and I believe it'll likely be on the upgrade list in short order. Um. As such, I would request council's consideration of the application for the boundary adjustment.
All right, I'm not sure that that uh, was maybe discussed with the applicants. Um, can we verify if it was?
I don't know.
The caveats. Um, I guess that can be gone, gone over with them.
That can be.
At this time, but um, I, I am quite familiar with this property. It was part of my family's original farm out in that area. And um, I have spoken with the landowners who wish to remove that small acreage, um, and keep the remainder together. They're very conservation minded and have done a lot of work on that, uh, on those two quarters, so I don't have any issue with this at all. But I'd look to the rest of council for comments and a motion. Councillor Seawark.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, no concerns over this, uh, so I would give you that motion to approve the boundary adjustment.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion?
We including the road widening? I just want to be clear.
Are we including the road widening?
I don't have a problem with the south, but is it necessary on the other two? I guess we're just taking.
Just taking it by caveat.
Okay, so it stays in their title until we have to come and survey it out, and we only do that when we're actually needing it and building it and moving everybody's approaches.
Right.
Yes, I would, with that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ask for the vote, all in favor. Thank you. Motion is carried. E four Kaylee, phase three subdivision, northwest nineteen seventeen. E four Kayleigh, phase three subdivision, northwest nineteen seventeen twenty-eight, west of the fourth, request for subdivision. Page one ninety-four of our agenda. Director Heming.
Thank you. Madam Reeve, this is a an application by us in Counselor Seaworth's division. What we are proposing to do is subdivide forty-three new residential community district lots to public utility lots and leaving a balance of about nineteen acres. Uh, all including new internal roadways and laneways in the hamlet of Kayleigh. I, there is information in your staff report about the community consultation. And there was some comments received back in March. Uh, we have provided letters out to the community on March nineteenth, May fifteenth. And again, again, on twice on May fifteenth. Um, but we only received letters from one individual from the March con uh, March circulation. Which listed four concerns that you will find near the bottom of your page one ninety-five of your staff report. Uh, there was no other responses to our subdivision circulations.
Thank you. Um, Director, but sorry. How many lots were in that other, the last phase we did that we just sold out?
Oh, I don't know. Um, but I could count them. I don't think there, I think it was a very similar amount.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That I don't need. I was just curious. And um, I'll go to you, Counselor Seaworth.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just to, I guess, first to answer that question, I believe it was twenty uh on each of the other streets, ten on each side. Um, this one is going quite a bit further west, so that's why the more more lots. Um, just I guess a couple of questions through the Reeve to municipal manager, not municipal manager, municipal. Advisor Riva Camburn, um, got a bit of history and knowledge because you've been there. So in terms of the water, so it's my understanding a six-inch water line comes from High River to service this. So how many residents is that good for?
Presently, the system is designed to service about eight hundred residents. So of course, if you divide that by, you know, average population for per household. And we're with the the new houses being built, we might be at three fifty and so we've got a lot of room. Uh, yet, uh, we have seventy-two acre feet of water and and a reservoir. So that that's sufficient. The sewer system was also, uh, the Sewers Lagoon was designed to service population up to eight hundred as well. So that was, that was done when it was a village prior to us uh taking over. Uh, of course, we did run the water line from High River, but the water used to come from Woman Schooly.
Okay, thank you. What about uh overland drainage? Um, just trying to find it right now. There was something in here about. Stormwater being both minor and maybe, yeah, there it is on page one ninety-six. Stormwater managed through a dual system overland, that's minor, and then underground major facilities. What uh, what underground are we? Doing here?
Well, I I will admit, I haven't, wasn't in the last meeting, I thought all the drainage was overland. Uh, some headed north uh from part of these lots and and some will continue to the south. But it will match um what's already existing.
Okay.
My interrupt, we have asked for a stormwater management plan to be provided to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department as condition number two of the approval.
Right. Okay, yeah, no, I like that. I just, I was surprised by the mention of an underground because I didn't know that that was part of it. As far as I know, there's no underground in Kayleigh existing.
Uh, we will check into that. I suppose underground could be a culvert, I suppose.
If I may, Madam Reeve?
Okay.
Go ahead, Lee.
Um, thank you. Yeah, so we um, we just recently did receive the thirty percent drawings, so basically just thirty percent. Design and with that, there is the potential that there might be. It is overland and then um it might enter catch basin and uh go underneath the road and to a storm pipe. Um. A lot of the water is being directed to the north. Um, we are aware, of course, is uh with the, some of the concerns with the stormwater in Kayleigh. Um, so uh, the road is also, the main road, the main east-west road is also crossfall towards the north to help the water drain. Uh, towards the north, the land um drains that way naturally anyway, so like uh. It's a little advisor, uh, Riva Camburn mentioned, we are just following the natural drainage of the land, but. Uh, so once we get the next set of drawings, it's going to be more detailed and we'll know better where we're looking um at potential underground piping. Um, I know there's one in Kayleigh currently that's by the school there. Um, uh, it's very shallow and it goes into a. A catch basin and then drains towards the, drains towards the east. Uh, so that's the only one I'm really aware of in Kayleigh so far.
Okay, thank you for that. So just carrying on with some of the conditions here. Updated restrictive covenant to be prepared and registered. So our, is that restrictive covenant going to come to council for approval or how does that?
I think that would be ideal. That would come to council for approval.
Okay.
You'll notice in the staff report, it speaks to some of the changes we'd like to make in the restrictive covenant. If council has any specific concerns or suggestions, um, we'd like to certainly hear them, but. We need to be able to have front access, driveway access to the lot, some of the lots, they don't all work with a rear access component. And and of course, we are looking at allowing for attached housing, so again, that changes the restrictive covenant design parameters to allow for that.
Okay, and I think uh there has been interest in the past for some duplexes, so maybe that's an option on the far. East lots there. Um, but I look forward to seeing that restrictive covenant when it comes. Uh, public reserve, yeah, definitely defer it onto the balanced parcel. I would expect to be a. A sizable chunk there that will never be developed due to the slew and just delay the land there. Condition number four, road naming plan to be prepared and approved by council. Um, so I guess I'm just looking for, um, what does that look like? And then maybe just provide a bit of background. And a historical context on road naming in in Kayleigh, so. We've dealt with a number of road names today and and other days and oftentimes they're quite simple and then nice, pretty names. Um, in Kayleigh, they're typically based upon uh names of historical people or or significant people in the community. Since Foothills County has taken over um governance at Kayleigh, we've built, um, the county has built and. Designed and named two streets uh right next to this one. The last one was Coot Street. So Coot Street was named after George Gibson Coot, a bank manager, farmer, and federal politician. With family still residing near the family farm just east of Kayleigh today. While managing the bank at Nanton, he would commute from his farm east of Kayleigh, which would take an hour each way at a trot. He was elected to Parliament to serve the area in the McLeod riding in nineteen twenty-one and served fifteen years there under two different federal parties. It was absolutely exciting as I read some of his speeches, which are all available online, um, like two thousand plus of them. So I did not read all of them by any stretch, uh, but he spoke significantly about his concerns of tariffs. Protectionism, inflation, and cleaning up government. We could say that exact same thing today. And one thing that really stuck out in my mind is uh when he was calling for reform of Parliament. And removal of the power of the Prime Minister to unilaterally advise dissolution and prorogation. Perhaps his most famous quote, um, a little bit more on the silly side. He said, every family should have at least three children. Then if one is a genius, the other two can support him. So that was Coot Street. The other one that the county did just before that was Caspel Street, and I do have a bit of a. Um, special place in my heart with this, as it is a family uh relative. It was named after a young boy named Richard Earl Caspel. Who served his country in the Great War, joining Canada's Princess Patricia's Light Infantry. As a teenager in nineteen sixteen, he went on to many battles in France. Including Vimy Ridge and also had many stays in military hospitals due to his injuries. In the final weeks of the war, he served in what is now called the one-hundred-day offensive. A push that saw significant wins for the Allied forces and helped contribute to armistice on November eleventh. An offensive that demonstrated incredible skill, strength, and resilience from our Canadian forces. Starting August eighth nineteen eighteen, the Amiens Offensive was an attack launched in fog against the German positions. Pushing them twelve miles east. The swift advance caught the Germans by surprise, such a surprise that the Germans had no clue it was happening. They fired the gun, their guns, where nobody was. And they are, the Allied forces also captured German soldiers as they were eating breakfast. That was the level of the surprise that they brought upon the German forces. Within three weeks, the Allied forces, including Canadians. And including Richard Earl Caspel, forced the Germans all the way back to the Hindenburg Line. A heavily fortified line set up by the Germans months earlier. September eighteenth nineteen eighteen, the Allied forces again saw major victors. They pushed through twenty miles. Of the Hindenburg Line, once again demonstrating the strength of the Allied forces. It was in this offensive, specifically the Battle of Fe, that Private Richard Earl Caspel was killed in action. A young man's life cut short at twenty years old, but his name is remembered today at Caspel Street. Um, he's a bit, that story's a bit special in our world. That is the, he is the brother to my wife's great-grandfather. So when we look at um road naming plan to be prepared and approved by council, I guess my question is, what does that? Look like? Is is administration going to do some research and come back or? Do we reach out to the community for suggestions or? What's it look like? Maybe I'll just leave that out there. Um, it is a condition and we'll look forward to that and whatever it is in the future.
Hey, um. I I had a question with regard to cost recovery on these lots. I guess we'll. Cross that bridge when we figure out how much the development is costing us on it, but sure, Advisor Riva Camburn, go ahead.
Yes, and we have a class three estimate, but it doesn't include uh power um as of yet and and gas. And telephone or whatever other services uh that will be put in there, but uh. It it's looking uh of the earthworks, uh potable water, wastewater, stormwater, roadworks. Uh, with contingency will be about one-point-eight million. So you divide that by forty-three, so we're under fifty thousand uh per lot. And we'll have to see what those others, other costs come in at. But um, you know, if the, if these estimates are correct, then we're going to be pretty close to. Uh, what are other lots? Um, our last phase, not not too far away from that. So it's looking uh to me pretty uh, pretty positive from a cost perspective, but you never know until you actually uh tender it out.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Otherwise, I'd be looking for um motion. On subdivision. Counselor Seaworth.
Sure, I'd give you that motion to approve the subdivision as laid out in our staff.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for the vote, all in favor. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Motion to go out of subdivision, approving authority, Counselor McHugh, all in favor. Carried. All right, let's go to F four. Uh, Invest Greater Calgary Secretariat Services Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding. Page two thirty-two of our agenda, Director Hemingway.
I'll try to speak on this. I'm not incredibly familiar with it, but I do recall. Multiple conversations at the CMRB level with respect to establishing a regional economic development body, which is. To the point where now this, the Calgary Economic Development Group is charged with putting together. This Invest Greater Calgary, it's a collaborative regional economic development initiative. And there will be a committee and and. Advisory Committee to support the work in the, of the regional economic development body and the advisory committee will be made up of the individual municipalities that the advisory group is supporting. Now, this has actually come a long way. Um, we have in your agenda package an MOU for you to consider, as well as I would suggest a very, very, very close to being completed draft of a service agreement. Um, basically, I am, um, the MOU puts us at the table. And the service agreement charges us nine thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars for about a three-year time period. And we can get out with a one-year, I believe, one-year's notice.
Yeah.
All of which is quite reasonable. Um. So if council doesn't have any questions, you're feeling like you can move forward on this, what I will eventually like is for council to. Have a motion to uh execute the memorandum of understanding. I would leave the uh suggest that the service agreement be executed by the CIO. At some point when it's finalized, as the city of Calgary is still working through some details and you can see in your staff report, it isn't fully, fully completed yet, so. It's quite close, but I wanted to put this on council's agenda throughout the region before everybody went away on summer break.
Hey? Uh, yes, this was brought up at uh one of our last CMRB meetings. It was a discussion, uh, Greater Calgary and Best Calgary did a. Really good uh job, I thought, on their presentation for us. And um certainly something I've always uh said. That regional planning should be supporting was economic development and tourism. And so for me, I I think this is a step in the right direction to see just what they come up with over the next three years. I. Think it's imperative with us ha, in developing our industrial corridor that we have a seat at this table uh. Uh, just to promote our own uh, our own interests in the area. Counselor Costello.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. I don't know whether it's just an oversight or what, but on page two thirty-four to two thirty-five, there are seven. Regions mentioned, but then the page after, they start talking about putting Cochrane in. So I don't know whether it was just a mistake that they didn't bother with the, with the list on this one and they just forgot Cochrane.
No, I think Cochrane had expressed they didn't want to be part of this originally. And they have included them, so they may be expressed an interest in uh being part of it now, so.
Okay, because I see on the next page, they're listed there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I think that's where that came from. Deputy Reeve Waldorf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and through the chair to the floor. Um, thanks, Director Hemingway, for the report and uh, I mean, I really like the. Collaborative nature and some of the comments that we found in the report. Consensus-based approach seems to make sense, and I know we've talked in past as council about the uh, you know. Round up ten thousand bucks seems to be reasonable for the value and given the fact that there's an O clause, um, I'm uh. Finding that this is a a good, good option to consider. Thank you.
You, anyone else? Wishing to provide comment or emotion? Deputy Reeve Waldorf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a point of clarification, the request of the motion is to approve the signing of the MOU. And that uh we consider the recommended contribution as a member of the Invest Greater Calgary Initiative. Would that be the motion?
I would suggest that council indicated a a motion to execute the the MOU and that direct um. The CIO to continue to work towards execution of the service agreement. And leave it at that. Um, the nine thousand dollars a year is is. It's, it's embedded in the MOU, so we will get billed at some point before the end of the year for that.
Uh, Deputy Reeve Waldorf.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and through the chair to the floor. So if that makes, if you're looking for a motion, I would be prepared to give you that motion. To execute the signing of the MOU and have CIO um. Involved as Director Hemingway suggested.
Thank you. We have a motion, uh, further discussion, Counselor McHugh.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and uh, through the chair to Director Hemingway. Just want to make sure I'm reading this right. I think I'm speaking in favor of motion, but if we go to page two thirty-seven. Of the staff report, this is looking. So it looks like we've got the government of Alberta throwing in three hundred thousand and the government of Canada is throwing in forty thousand. For twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight, so it's looking like this thing is pretty well already funded. So what is the question? I ju- I just wanted to, so on page two thirty-six, their budget is. We're looking at one point four, so, so the contributions are. Is that budget built with the contributions from the municipality? And the government funding, or is this one point four million just a uh? Total of the fees to the municipalities?
Director Hemingway.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
No, I don't either.
But we don't have all the money we need yet. Um, I think is the, the question is they have a larger three-year budget process. They, they, they would like to see more funding than they currently have. But they feel like can get moving. They're going to continue to explore external funding sources to support project development.
Yeah, I, I think it's over and above Counselor McHugh. They're asking for another four thirty-six from.
Okay, so thanks for that. So if I am reading this right, though, by participating, we are actually taking advantage of the three hundred thousand that. Uh, while three hundred forty thousand that has been put forwards by the government of Alberta, three hundred thousand from. Twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight and forty thousand from the government of Canada, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I'm speaking in favor of the motion.
Right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? I don't see any. So I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? Thank you, that motion is carried. Alright, uh, are we ready for accounts for July the second? Any questions on the accounts? Uh, otherwise I'd look for a motion, Counselor Oll. He'll give us up. Further discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion carry. And minutes for June twenty-fifth, uh, Counselor Alger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things I picked up on. The first one is F nine, which is the last page of our. Agenda and it's just on the wording, so this was the request for the letter from council to the National Resources Conservation Board. I believe we decided not to do that because we were doing our own. Letter. So the way it's written is that we uh. Uh, we acknowledge the letter from the, from the applicant. And then direct administration to proceed with drafting the letter, so it should be. It's just the, the letter means, to me, that means we're, we're agreeing with the request and we're drafting that letter. So it's just the word the in there that should be changed to our own letter or.
A letter?
Or Fortales County's. Letter.
I, I, I knew what you meant there, so I just, we already wrote and sent the letter, um.
Just clarifying in the.
I, you could, you could just take off that whole sentence and you're just acknowledging the neighbor. I don't know. I, I was fine with it. I knew, I knew what you meant.
That's my, uh, that's, that's one change I'd like to see. The other one is B six. Uh, which was the twenty-fourth Street East, five ninety-four, request to utilize the undeveloped road allowance. So the motion was lost and then I have my notes that Counselor Oll. Made a motion on the opposite way, but I'm not clear if that was an actual motion, so perhaps that could be clarified. I just have in my notes is her.
Discussed it. The discussion about the opposite motion, but we found it wasn't necessary, so.
No motion, yeah, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, um, Counselor Seaworth.
I'll just copycat Counselor Alger to start with, um. So F nine, um, I guess what, what caught my attention is, is the word. In there used, uh. Opposition, so the, the request was for a letter of opposition. And we talked about that in, in that that's not what we want. We wanted a letter of concern, so. What I, like, what I wrote down as a fix was changing the word the, as Counselor Alger talked about to the letter, to the word ah. And then just tack on of concern at the end, so. Direct administration to proceed with drafting a letter of concern, so it's not the letter of opposition that was requested.
It was, so we, we were opposing certain parts of it.
Yeah, what, what I thought we, I tried to articulate last week and it seems like a long time ago with the holidays shoved in there. That what, what they ask me for is, is this application in conformance or in compliance with our statutory planning documents? They don't ask for our opinion on it. I mean, they do ask if we have any specific concerns with respect to it, but what I did was provide a letter indicating that it does not meet our municipal development plan. Policies. Now, I've done that before and they've, they don't think that those municipal development plan policies. Are written such that they should have an impact on the NRCB's decision. Um, so my suggestion to council is that's what I would expect that they'll do again. And that we should actually request a review of that decision when the decision comes out. I think there's like a twenty-five day period subsequent to the decision coming out. That if it's approved, that we request that decision be reviewed and it goes to a panel. And then we have an opportunity to argue why we think they should contemplate our municipal development plan policies. And if they choose not to, then that's the end of it, but if they suggest that it is possible, then we go to the National Resources Conservation Board. And have an argument about it there. Cause I, I, if nothing else, we'll learn something, then we are in the process of preparing a new municipal development plan or getting ready to do so, so. Now would be the time, I, now would be good timing for us to have an understanding of why the NRCB really under, feels like they don't need to. Support, they don't need to contemplate a, a policy in our municipal development plan that sets. That suggests that the MDS of a proposed CFO. Should be located one half mile from a residence. Um, and to me, it seems like a reasonable and not completely unreasonable and. Um, specific and not site-specific type of application on a site and it gives everybody an idea about where to cite CFO, so. I did write the letter articulating that it did not meet our municipal development plan in this location and alternatives locations should be sought by the applicant. Um, but I don't expect that that will be supported by the NRCB.
So back to the motions, should we just say provider, providing or providing a response?
Letter, I don't.
To provide a response, period?
A letter, well, the wording at the time was letter of concern. That's what was in the motion made.
Yeah, I like that fix.
Okay, can we read that again? Sorry. What were we gonna say? In the minutes, just so our staff are clear, because they're.
Just change the word the to ah, and tack on of concern.
Of concern, okay. Are we good with that? Okay.
Okay, a couple more.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Counselor Alger, for catching B six, uh. Where is it unmarked?
Can we pull the minutes up or do we have copies here? I don't have my copy with me.
Okay, um. D eight. So, so this is page thirteen. Um, couple paragraphs down, so the motion was lost. Um, but that, so just before that, the resolution five eighty-four be amended to include the submission. Of a completed outline plan for the application as a suggested condition. Um, the motion was not. To add in a suggested condition, it was to add in a condition, so just remove the word suggested. And then.
Story, we're just getting to it, Counselor Seaworth, just hang on a sec. D eight, was it?
D eight.
D is in dog eight.
Right there. Second line from the top there, just remove the little word suggested.
Remove the word or not there, suggesting?
Yeah, right there.
As a condition?
Yeah.
Kate?
Um, and the last item, just flip back to page eleven, so this is D eight as well. At the very start, so I made the motion, um. Not even remotely what is written here, so the motion was to refuse the land use redesignation. On, I forget what the land descriptions were, but essentially the high field lands. So it was not first reading, it was a motion to refuse, but only those specific lands. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, so that, the by, that bylaw given first reading, keep going down a little bit, is that where it says? Motion was lost. Okay, the motion was to refuse, so change that, all that. Uh, motion was to refuse. Is that down underneath? No, nowhere else? We missed it. Kate?
So the basic process is I gave that motion to refuse on the high field lands. And then Counselor McHugh gave a motion to refuse the all of it, which is the next item on there, five eighty-two. And then. After lunch was the motion to give first reading, which is there, five eighty. Four. So it's just five eighty-one.
It should say that the bylaw be refused instead of be given first reading.
Yeah, and land descriptions adjusted accordingly.
What can, sorry, Manager Barrett? Uh, yeah, tell us what you're thinking.
I think that's fine. We can make that change. We should have obtained clarification at the time because in our, in our interpretation, you were only asking the part of it be refused. And therefore the other part be approved. That was our interpretation when we wrote the.
Yeah, I thought you said you wanted the high field portion to be approved and the.
Yeah, it was to refuse.
To be refused, but the Roland to be approved.
Well, no, the motion was to refuse the high field lands. There was no discussion about the Roland, that was. The one thing first and then we come to that.
Does that say it above there then? Cause we have to have that in there that you first made the motion to approve.
No, no motion to approve yet.
It was very convoluted, but I think we can make that change and there's no issue.
Um, Counselor McHugh.
The motion was to only consider the High Field Investment Group Limited lands. There was no contemplation of the Roland's in the initial motion.
I think we. Oh. Anything else, Counselor Seaworth?
No, that was, uh, also, I would give you a motion to approve the minutes and I guess. When those changes are made, if you could just send them out, so we, no, thank you.
Kate, anyone else on the minutes? Ask for the vote, then all in favor of minutes. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, um. Director Hemingway, anything in open?
Nothing, thank you, Madam. Um, but I would ask perhaps Manager Barrett to speak to council or myself to speak to council that. Once we finish today's meeting, we will be harassing you to um, approve the minutes, uh, by email. Cause we do, we'll give you about a week and then we're going to move forward. We've got lots of people waiting for these minutes.
Yeah. Kate, thank you. Um, Advisor Reva Cameron, anything in open? Kate, CIO Payne, anything in open? Manager Barrett? Kate, uh, committee reports, Counselor Castell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Reeve. So we're going back two weeks because we didn't give our committee reports. So this was, um, Diamond Valley Board Meeting, Library Board Meeting, Thursday, June nineteenth. We met at the Sheep River Library Boardroom and, uh, we had the report from the library manager and reports from friends of. The Sheep River Library, the Marigold Report, Treasurer Report, Committee Reports. And then we got notified that the solar panels on the library roof are installed. But they aren't connected because they need to be inspected. Um, in this fall, there's plans in progress for a strategic planning session for the board. Then on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, I had two development appeal boards. Hearings, uh, in council chambers and both were very different. And I believe the board made the right decisions as both decisions were unanimous. And unofficially, I attended the High River Rotary Meeting with Reeve Miller. At the High River Legion on Monday, June twenty-third. It was a dinner honoring volunteers, so of course, Foothills County had. Uh, contributed to this event. And I'll let the Reeve continue on with the rest of it. And then, June twenty-sixth, I had an Okatoks Library Board Meeting. And we met at Okatoks Library. The director gave a good report on the library facilities. There's still some issues with the building and the library space. That needs to be dealt with, with the town. And staff brought us up to date on community engagements and the plan of service that was launched in January. And the fundraising committee advised us, they've applied for many grants and are waiting for a whole bunch of confirmations. On Monday, June the thirtieth, uh, was our Dark Sky Working Group. It was our last meeting and. Good discussions on our action list and I'll let our Chair, Counselor Oll elaborate. And yesterday, uh, I went to the Millervale Races as an invite. As a counselor to be in the parade along with Reeve Miller and, and Counselor Oll. And there were other dignitaries there as in MP Barlow and, and MLA. Well, I think he was invited as the MLA, but I think, yeah, that's what's his invite, Sigurdsson. Um. I, I have to confirm it, but I believe it was a record turnout for the hundred and twentieth running. Great weather, fast horses, excellent food, visits with friends and neighbors and it was a good time had by all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seaworth.
Thank you, uh, just a couple of things over the past two weeks. We had Forres, the Foothills Okatoks Rec Society Meeting. Um, not a lot happened there. Uh, financials were, were in good shape. It's been another strong year going forward. Um, the turf replacement, it's, uh, booked. It was supposed to be happening, uh, I think July, but it's been. Backed off a little bit till later in August, um, largely due to, uh, the tariff piece and giving. Grant agreements in place and how it all relates together. Not tariff, I just, I guess it's just a grant. Application, uh, hoping to get some funds for. application, hoping to get some funds for those as opposed to just Forrez paying the full cost. So we just backed that off so that that grant application could be done, rather than proceeding too quick and missing out completely on the grant. So Yeah, and we talked about what land use options out there. So this is something that the I M C has been talking about a little bit in terms of what what additional uses could be done on that land there for recreation purposes. So we had a good discussion about that, and that will be coming back to the I M C in due time. That's about all I had for that meeting. And then just Economic Development Committee Meeting. So we met with the outfit that's doing the website landing page, and he showed us what he's got and what that looks like going forward. So it was a good conversation. And that was all for me this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Alger.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll go back to Monday, the twenty third. We had a Dumbo Recreation Board. We held a special meeting to deal with some sale of some items from the Artesia Group. We had, I had a bit of a chuckle because Mr. Porter did a little dissertation on Zoom etiquette and people volunteering to to do motions, mostly speaking towards our our members at large in this group. It's typically the typically the counselors that are involved with the D R B that do the do the motions. So we're hoping that the residents would step up a little bit more. And he did a nice, as I said, a nice dissertation. And then after he finished, we asked for a motion to acknowledge that and it was crickets, crickets. So it didn't, so it really didn't catch in. But yeah, we're hoping to see we're hoping to see a little bit more influx from our from our members at large. And he wasn't just speaking strictly with the Dumbo Rec Board. He's talking about all our recreation, all our boards together. On Tuesday, the twenty fourth, I attended the West Winds Finance Meeting, which was a dinner meeting at the Sandstone Lodge. And then we went right into our board meeting where we had a, we opened up the board meeting with about a twenty minute deal with the residents of the area. They come and sit and can air their grievances and their comments. And most of the time, there's very few grievances. It's mostly how they love the people and the staff and the food. We have very few complaints across the board within West Winds Community all through the year. We did announce that we picked Partners Development Group to build the ten unit Darcy Ranch development that we're doing right now. So Partners was the same company that built our Drake Landing operation last year. We were down to, in, as I mentioned, two weeks ago, we were down to two potential developers and we picked Partners because of their use of the local trades. So they were both both applicants were very well groomed in in this field, but we just like Partners better because out of I'm going to say twelve trades that would be needed to build this, probably ten of them were local Okatoks and Foothills County trades. So we were, that kind of tipped the scales for me and everybody else. I guess all I had was, yesterday was the Duington Community Breakfast, forty-third annual. So we went out on Monday night and set up all the tables and chairs and watched the weather very closely. Know it was going to be nice. So we set everything up the night before. And woke up to an extremely beautiful day, as we all did. We topped the charts at about seven hundred and fifty people, we figure, which is about three hundred more than we normally have. And within an hour and a half, we were pretty much out of the ham and the sausages, and we reduced the price and everybody the next group for about the next hour just got pancakes. We had lots of pancakes. We had a great big griddle on wheels and and the boys just kept popping out the pancakes and everybody was happy and it was a great crowd. We usually get Sun Country to to come and play some music and do some ad spots for us and things like that. But Kevin from Sun Country called us the day before and said he couldn't get the equipment. I don't know if it was utilized for somewhere else. And when earlier in the, probably in Blacky, yeah.
Millerville.
Or Millerville.
Millerville.
And typically in in our board meetings, we've talked about having a band and things like that, music in the background. And we've always been against that because it's just such a a community events that the people just sit there and they just visit and they visit. And we had, at the end, we had all the tables and chairs picked up except for one table. There was two old, old folks just sitting there, just having a kibitz. And we literally had to go, you know, we're wrapping up here, folks. So, yeah, so it's a great visit and it was a great turnout. And as I said, we I, as I do every year, I reach out to the fire department to come and and bring a shiny fire engine and some of our finest dressed guys and gals. And they showed up with, I think, eight units of apparatus plus the, you know, some one tons and half tons of the Assistant Chief whatnot. And it was just spectacular and everybody was just in awe of all the equipment. And they were there for about half an hour, and then they got a call for a structure fire out in the Dumbo Road Country. So right, and I was telling Rob that I was standing kind of behind a tree and I could hear the, I could hear the engine fire up. And I was like, why would he be starting up? And and then I was behind a tree and then all of a sudden I saw a light go on. And then all of a sudden over here, another light went on. And then all of a sudden, they were all on. And then the horns started walking and and away they went. And boy, they ripped out of there a hundred miles an hour around the corner and gone. So very professional, quite actually quite entertaining to the to the residents who were watching this whole thing in action, although obviously not the reason that we want to see them go into action. But so we did get a few of the firefighters fed, but I don't think all of them. And but it was a complete success. And that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Waldorf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Through the chair to the floor, attended the Foothills Okatoks Rec Society Meeting, reported on by Counselor Seaworth. Dumbo Recreation Board Special Meeting. The only thing I would add is that the financial report for twenty twenty four was given. There is an equity accumulated surplus of just over two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. And there was also a discussion on some dispersal with the Homeowners Association and Artesia, some rink boards. So that was part of that discussion. The Economic Development Advisory Committee, as Counselor Seaworth said, we had the Progressive West Consulting Group in. Mr. Castarella brought two of his associates. And it was a very good discussion in terms of where we're at today and the fact that you know, the request going into it was to have a landing page that could direct inquiries to the various different sites. Because I know our staff have done a great job in setting up what we have right now. Just information seemed to be all over. But there was some good discussion on the strategic approach to contact numbers, what kind of information people could get, the economic development position here at Foothills County. Some discussion on making sure that you know, we we keep moving things forward and not totally wait until that person is hired, because there are some things now that we can be doing that will be particularly effective, especially so that the active person feels and takes ownership and feels ownership of the whole program. Talked about R M A and Alberta Municipalities, having some amazing data tools that are relatively available and relatively cheap. Talked about the Explorer Foothills Group, talked about the provincial government, and they have some accessible as well. So lots of work ahead, and the group is certainly interested in keeping everything moving forward. So that was a a good presentation. And thanks to everybody for for participating in that. And this week had no official committees to report on. Thank you.
Thank you. For myself, as brought up by Counselor Castell, I attended the Rotary Awards Evening and was, Foothills was noted as being one of the major sponsors there, which I'm sure that's, we went through F C S S for that event. Lovely evening, lots of good conversation and lots of well-deserved awards to the Rotary members. I also attended the Economic Development Advisory Committee, which has been covered by Deputy Reeve Waldorf and had the pleasure of attending the hundred and twentieth running of the Millerville Races. Always a good time and lots of good conversation with MP Barlow and M L A Sigurdsson. And so that's all I had. On to you, Counselor McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the Chair, just knock on to the Dumbo Recreation Board and say, thank goodness we had corps. So we got the meeting achieved. That was the most important thing. Economic development. The So what we have now is an outline plan for the landing page. So I believe our go-forward motion is for administration. The resolution come to council is for administration to move forwards with, it was a little bit open-ended. There is commitments from the consultant that we could move forward on. And I believe the recommendation resolution was for administration to look at the pieces of that contract and decide what to move forwards on. So a little bit of a stumbling block here with the with the summer break. And hopefully it does progress during the summer. Some discussion over whether or not the Economic Development Officer will hit the ground running, or if we should have a more formal plan for when they arrive, or let the Economic Development Officer build that themselves. And Blacky Parade yesterday morning, extremely well attended. As many little kids as I can ever remember, Main Street was just lined up with them and back around the corner. Parade was, I think we had more horses this year, was a little bit a little bit kind of the same, Foothills float, of course, always ahead hit with the kids and wanting to know how long it took to build it. So I don't know how long it took to build it, but I'd be wouldn't mind having that in the arsenal to reply at a future date. And I don't know if we got to seven hundred, but they were lined up at the block. We started breakfast starts at eight and they were still serving at ten. So just barely time to get the street cleared to get the parade through. And that's alls I have. Thank you very kindly.
Counselor Oll?
Thank you, Madam Reeve. The first thing I have for my report over the past two weeks is I took the opportunity to reply to the Alberta Utilities Commission as an A U C review of Rule zero twenty four and the micro generation rules. And the reason I participated in that is they're thinking of layering up with red tape the before and after process for the smaller applications, which would limit the amounts produced to verified use only and would even force the the producers, the small producers, to reduce if necessary. And so with the review underway, I think it's really important, and I thought it was very important to participate because we're trying to prove the incentivizing and facilitating of covering hard surfaces, not de-incentivizing it. And this, these changes would de-incentivize it because we want to get the solar panels off of farmland and onto hard surfaces. So what they're planning to do is going to be overcomplicating it and making it difficult. And the perspective of the micro generators is to produce as much as you can and not be penalized if you produce extra when you economize or during times where you produce more in the summer, you produce less in the winter. So I thought it was really important to take part of it. And also, our energy manager ended up becoming aware of it too. I shared with him and he responded as well. So I just thought it was important to know that that was just kind of in the background and that it will affect us if they make that difficult. Next up is attended the Pridis Creek Estates Association Annual General Meeting. So it's nice to meet with the residents there. Not official, but just mentioning attended an official one, which is Cross Conservation Area, which was the Annual General Meeting and a regular board meeting following. Lots going on there, certainly financial review in in relation to all the A G M matters and such. But also just a little tally on some of the excellent things going on there. Seventeen programs in total for May and June, eleven schools visiting. And a little bit of tree planting going on as some programs are going on, sort of offset programs. The they're working with environmental, environment and protected areas, looking at some different projects. There is a wetland restoration project going on, certain, some events going on, fundraising. And their annual stampede barbecue is coming up on the weekend, just to mention a few. Following day was the Foothills Regional Emergency Services Commission Board Meeting, and that's keeping me quite busy as I'm reviewing documents as well as board meetings. At this point, just a couple of highlights, obviously looking at financials every time we meet. Looking at service improvements and alignments and technology, there's just a whole lot going on. Certainly, from an assessment from our executive director, she's now been there for a year, Shelley Oriold. And she has just noted for us that they're seeing an increased call volumes. Some advances in the CAD and I T systems, industrial demands. And certainly, we're looking, as you've heard in council, we're looking at our accessing some other services to enhance the services we provide to our partners, that being Foothills is one of the partners, owners in this organization. In order to help with, they'll roll out of all these demands on the executive director, we're looking at adding a new position. Not a full-time, but part-time, just to assist with operations. There's been involvement from the organization with the Fire Chiefs Association, and we're certainly continuing to align with something that has just been a new ministerial order that's come out, the revised Alberta nine one one standards, version four, now in effect. So just a couple of logistics there. We continue to look at numerous types of technology in an effort to try to figure out how to align best with all of the organizations that we provide service, that being municipalities, partners and contracts that we provide our services to. And that means a lot of meetings that our executive director is going to at this time to go out and visit all the the partners and the fire departments that we serve. We did, as was mentioned by Counselor Castell, have our Dark Sky Stakeholders Working Group Meeting on June the thirtieth. That was Monday. And we're working on a lot of projects going on right now. And we have a large action list, as was mentioned. We're looking at producing a new presentation and Counselor Castell is looking at one for that geared towards the younger children. And we're going to be following up. Now, we're working on an educational program right now with creating some stickers with some of our designs that we have already. We're looking at continuing to distribute our posters to schools and libraries and businesses. Coming up with the good quote, quality photos that we're going to add to a reference bank. Designing certificate of commendation to provide homes and businesses that have been a great example to us. So a lot of carrots. You know, good thankful activities here. We're looking into installing some more signs and replacing the ones that have been stolen. And we're continuing our collaboration with a whole group in Nova Scotia. And we have a new, we had an announcement that there is a a city in British Columbia that's working towards their designation as a dark sky community. So that's through the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada, and they may collaborate with us as well. So that's Seychelles on in the British Columbia. So along with that, we did have I guess, just that was a major action list, but we did have a great meeting just in sharing all the things that everybody's working on, and they range far and wide. And there's a number of dark sky events going on over the summer. So that takes care of that. And then there was a fan out, nonofficial, that through the High Country Royal Crime Watch, we got to be on the lookout. Note from the R C M P. So that was homework on the weekend for me. And we did send out a fan out far and wide that a black Toyota four runner with a license plate C T P four six eight zero is stolen license, stolen car, and it's out breaking in or extraordinary in the Foothills County, looking particular for firearms. So just share it here as well. And a couple more, almost done. Did attend Canada Day event, as was mentioned, Pridis Community Association Stampede Breakfast is taking place on Sunday. Mentioned that earlier, but one more time. And then lastly, I did attend on Saturday, the Fish Creek Watershed Association Event called the Creek Walk. And it was a beautiful day just before the thunder showers. And they provided a nice walk and a very great tour along the way with some very informative guests, presenters. And was well done. So thanks to all the And, uh, was, uh, well done. So thanks to all the organizers on that. And that's all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that completes, uh, our agenda. Our next, uh, regular meeting will be August the twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, back to council and administration one last time for anything else that we may have missed. I don't see anything. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn. Counselor Seaworth, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.